Good evening, everybody. Calling to order, meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Arlington. It is March 25th, 2019, and we're pretty much on time at 7:15 PM. Introducing some people over to my right is Selectman John Hurd. Immediately to my right is Selectman Joe Kuro. I'm Selectman Dan Dunn. To my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahon and Selectwoman Clarissa Rowe. And we are joined by Town Manager Adam Chaplaine, our Town Council Doug Heim, and our Board Administrator Marie Kripelka. And I did come up with a quote for this evening, and it's a Dr. Seuss quote. Dr. Seuss says, "How did it get so late so soon?"
I'll read that at the end.
Well, I plan on reminding people about it at like 10:30 when we still have five articles left. So, our first order is a Millbrook presentation. Ms. Rowe?
Yes, I am not presenting. My neighbor and friend Glenn Litten, who is the producer of this wonderful show, will talk about it.
Well, first of all, thanks to the Board for inviting me to screen this this evening. It was produced for the Schwamm Mill Preservation Trust, and I think it's pretty self-explanatory. So what I'll do is I'll roll it, and then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
I've been told it's eight minutes long, approximately.
Millbrook lends its name to many of Arlington's streets, buildings, and businesses. Yet the Brook itself remains largely unknown and unsung. For too long, it's gone unnoticed and even neglected, but Millbrook played a commanding role in Arlington's beginnings and growth, and today it holds great potential to enhance the town's verdant open spaces. The Brook's geological origins are lost in the depths of prehistory. Scientists tell us that in the last Ice Age, Millbrook was a roaring river. Today, its flow is gentle and modest. It begins just west of Arlington in the wetlands called the Great Meadows, and it empties into the Lower Mystic Lake after leaving Meadowbrook Park and Mount Pleasant Cemetery. In the course of its run, it descends some 150 feet over nearly three miles. Native Americans lived along the Brook for many generations. One of their tribal leaders, known as Squaw Sajum, deeded much of the land to the local colonists. In 1637, Captain George Cook built a mill on the Brook. He diverted its water to create a pond, releasing the water as needed to power his grist mill. Less than 10 years later, Cook left his mill in the hands of his millwright, John Fawnell, and returned to England. For more than 200 years, many mills prospered along the banks of the Brook. They turned out everything from flour and lumber to medicines and saws. The mills were sold and resold, willed to heirs, went bankrupt, sometimes were abandoned, and too often were destroyed by fire. The roster of descendants from those mill owners reads like a who's who of early Massachusetts history, names like Robins, Fessenden, Winship, and especially Cutter. By the 1840s, a new family of German immigrants added their name to the roster. Five Schwamm brothers from the Ryland built mills along the Brook. The industrious brothers diversified into a number of profitable markets. Charles Schwamm outfitted his mill with lathes that could fashion wood into oval and round picture frames. With the Civil War spurring demand for photographic portraits, the Schwamm mill quickly became a leading supplier to households and retailers. Another brother, Theodore, manufactured the often elaborate wooden cases that housed the mechanisms for pianos. In an era when many families of means had pianos in their parlors, the demand for Schwamm's cases was strong. At one time or another, the Schwamm brothers owned seven mill buildings along the Brook. Their picture frame business continued all the way into the late 1960s. In 1970, a grassroots preservation trust led by Patricia Fitzmaurice purchased the former Charles Schwamm mill. Since then, the trust has operated it as a living history museum. Today, the old Schwamm mill still turns out elegant picture frames. It's one of the oldest continually operating mill sites in the United States. The beginning of the end for water-powered mills on the Brook came in 1871. The Town of Arlington obtained rights to divert water flowing from the Great Meadows. Their objective: to create a reservoir for the town's water supply. That meant millers such as the Schwamm's faced losing water power. They and many others went to court. But nothing could stop technological change. Over the next 50 years, steam and then electricity replaced power from the Brook. So today, Millbrook continues to flow through the heart of town, even though it no longer powers Arlington industry. But it's not exactly free-flowing. Over the years, it's been channeled, impeded by dams, obscured by overgrowth, and even buried in underground culverts. In fact, much of the land on which Arlington High School and its playing field stand was once the eight-acre Cutter's Mill Pond. Now, the town owns only about 35% of the land adjacent to the Brook. The rest is privately owned. Sadly, the Brook is also polluted. In 2018, it earned a grade of C- from the Mystic River Watershed Association. As early as the 1920s, concerned residents and town officials began making proposals to rescue Millbrook and once again make it a celebrated resource. These proposals, continuing today, include ways to beautify the Brook, cleanse its water, contribute to the town's economy, and develop its recreational potential. The Ethel Wellington Park is an example of how the Brook and the land along it have been enhanced to better serve the public. Within its leafy confines, the park offers not only walking paths and restful benches, but also, for the more actively inclined, tennis courts and a climbing wall. Even more improvements for Wellington Park, the Brook and its banks between Brattle and Grove Streets are on their way. The work will result in a model for revitalizing town-owned areas in the Millbrook corridor. It's funded by grants from the state's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and from the town's Community Preservation Act. Taking a cue from an initiative of the Mystic River Watershed Association, the upgrading will include flood control, environmental improvements, and increased public access. Wellington Park and other sites such as Cook's Hollow and the reservoir demonstrate that with imagination and willpower, both public and private land along Millbrook and the Brook itself can once again become contributors to the health, beauty, and vitality of Arlington. As it has been throughout Arlington's history and for eons before, Millbrook is a valuable and timeless natural resource. It deserves celebration and, above all, care. That becomes evident to all who walk its banks and hear its music.
And Glenn, I believe that The Voice is also an Arlington resident?
Not only The Voice, but the composer, Jonathan Kuziak, and the fellow who recorded the narration, Ryan Barrett. They're all Arlingtonians.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
They're available for sale.
Yeah.
I'd like to get the people to work down his credit.
Okay. Sorry, I spoke too soon.
Excellent. Thank you. There you go. Thank you very much. Anybody else have questions for Glenn? All right. All right. Next up is our consent agenda. For the consent agenda, we simply approve everything with one vote unless someone needs to pull something out of the consent agenda. We have minutes for meetings for January 23rd and March 11th. We have a request for the ice cream fundraiser for the Dana Farber Cancer Institute on the Cutter House lawn on May 18th. And also, I should say, if you're here for one of these items and you want to talk to it, come on up to the microphone, and I'll bring you up a call in here in just a second. But just come on up to the mic right now. Legal act for a change of stock interest or alcohol license for fusion taste. One-day beer and wine license at the Whitmore Robbins' house for a private event. And we have new election workers, Camilla Haas, Robert Largington, and Marilyn Scribner. Is anyone here to speak to any of these items? Come on up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Saagar Shtoghi, and I'm a sophomore at Arlington High School, as well as the president of the Arlington High School Scoober Mania Club. So Scoober Mania is essentially an all-you-can-eat ice cream fundraiser that raises money for care and research at the Dana Farber Cancer Institute of Boston. And we've ran this event for the past four years at the Jefferson Cutter House lawn and raised a sum of over $12,000. And so today, I'm here requesting to use the same venue again on May 18th as well as May 19th, from 5:30 AM to, or from 10:00 AM to 5:30 PM. Yeah.
That's great. And if we want to run more, why don't we go on the web?
Well, we're going to be posting flyers around the school, around schools as well as around the whole town. And yeah, there isn't really much on.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five zero vote. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Traffic rules and orders. Request one handicap parking space, Michelle Connolly. Is Michelle Connolly here? Or someone for them? No. We do have a report from the police department.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kuro. Any, not seeing anybody here speak. Any discussion?
Just that Officer Rato asked us, as he always does, to let the applicant know that the spot, anyone with a handicap pocket could park there. So if the Select Board office hasn't done that, if we could just convey that to the individual.
I bet she's going to come tonight, but something must be happening. She knows that.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five zero vote. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Traffic rules and orders. Request one handicap parking space, Michelle Connolly. Is Michelle Connolly here? Or someone for them? No. We do have a report from the police department.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kuro. Any, not seeing anybody here speak. Any discussion?
Just that Officer Rato asked us, as he always does, to let the applicant know that the spot, anyone with a handicap pocket could park there. So if the Select Board office hasn't done that, if we could just convey that to the individual.
I bet she's going to come tonight, but something must be happening. She knows that.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, five zero vote. Next up, discussion of vote, grant application to EverSource for electric vehicle charging station. Welcome. Introduce yourself and tell us about the proposal.
Good evening. I'm Ken Pruitt, the town's energy manager, here to talk about electric vehicle charging stations. I don't know if you have the proposal in front of you. You do?
We do.
Great, excellent. So let me turn to a copy of that then. So we have, first, just to mention a little bit about why we're talking about this. I think the town has been a leader in promoting clean energy technology and electric vehicles. And EV charging is, of course, an important part of that. We want to promote electric vehicles, not just for town employees, but also for residents. And there are a number of reasons to do that. For one, it's consistent with the town's net zero by 2050 goals established by this board. Electric public charging stations also benefit residents who don't happen to have them at their own homes, especially important for residents from multifamily, multi-unit apartment buildings, for example. And they also benefit businesses by attracting EV drivers to park in, you know, business districts. As you can see, there's a couple of, just two existing public charging stations. One is at the Russell Common Lot, the other's at the Gibbs School. And that's good, but if you look at the map of Arlington, that they're kind of concentrated in one area, and in fact, there's just two of them. So there, we've been looking at ways to expand the location of charging stations. You'll see on the next page, I'm here to talk tonight about a proposal for two additional locations. One is close to the Russell Common Lot, in fact, at the railroad lot behind Noddy Average Joe's. The other one is on Park Street, right in front of ACMI. And that would be, you know, establishing a public charging station in a location that's currently not served by a public charging station. I think what I will do is if you can skip ahead to the slide that says railroad lot, I'll come back to the funding mechanisms for the program in just a moment. You can see here the location, the proposed location of the charging station, a dual-port charge point station, which would be serving the two parking spaces closest to Water Street and the railroad lot. The picture on the bottom shows, in fact, where the charging station would be. It would look exactly like the charging station that's at the Russell Common Lot right now. There'd be the potential to expand charging stations in that same row, and I'll explain what the charge, sorry, the make-ready program from EverSource is in a moment. This would be establishing the first charging station, but it would also make it then easy to install up to four other dual-port charging stations in the future. And on the last page in your packet, you can see the close-up of the other location, which is right in front of ACMI. Again, a single charging station, but dual-port to charge two stations right next to the existing handicap spot. I spoke with Norm McLeod of ACMI. He's in favor of the project. This would be a similar situation where we'd establish the wiring, put in one station, but have the ability to put in up to four dual-port stations in the future as demand warranted that establishment. And just if you can skip back to the slide, EverSource Make Ready. So there's two, there's two components to what I'm here to propose tonight. One is to hopefully have your approval to file a request for EverSource to make a number of parking spots ready for future EV infrastructure. EverSource doesn't actually pay for the charging stations, but what they'll do is establish the wiring and the other infrastructure so that you can put in charging stations at minimal cost in the future, essentially just the cost of the station itself. And the key is, they won't do that work unless you promise to purchase a charging station within 30 days of them finishing their make-ready work. And at this point, the good news is, through a separate opportunity, we have an opportunity to get two charge point, charging stations for free this calendar year from Horizon Solutions, which is a firm that is a utility contractor that works for EverSource. They do most of the town's energy efficiency work through the Green Communities Grant Program. And if, because we've done so much work with them, they are willing to give us two free charge point stations for free. And then in the future years, each year that we give them at least $50,000 of work, they will give us another free charging station. And so that might be a good way to sort of roll out these public charging stations at a rate that hopefully will somewhat match the demand from residents. So the, so the two things that I'd be asking for the Board's approval for is, number one, to file a request through the, a proposal through the make-ready program to EverSource for the infrastructure work at the two locations that I covered. And secondarily, to accept these two free charging stations from Horizon, but I think more importantly, to designate the four parking spaces that are shown here as EV parking only, contingent upon that occurring once the charging stations are in and operating.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? Joe?
Two quick questions. First, are the charging stations, are they $14,000 a value per station or total?
No, that's for two of them together. There are a little over $7,000 each.
Okay. And is this basically a sure thing? EverSource will give us this if we apply for it?
Yes.
Or it's not competitive or?
No, in fact, we can apply as often as we want, and they're desperate. They're way behind their targets for the make-ready program, and so they're desperate to have as many applications as possible. In fact, we would propose even more work, except that for the requirement that we have a charging station ready to go within 30 days, which would be $7,000 each time, so.
Yeah. Great, fantastic. Thank you.
Diane? It may be in here, and I'm just missing it, and I apologize. I understand that the make-ready program through their contractors is responsible 100% for the infrastructure costs. What about any sort of maintenance-related issues that come up? Is that under the purview of responsibility of the Town of Arlington?
So anything related to the station itself, not the infrastructure leading up to it, but the charging station itself, we would have a, I'm glad you brought that up because there is also a $560 per charging station annual fee through charge point for maintenance of their station. It's essentially, you know, a warranty that covers that as well as networking the station. So that is an ongoing cost, but then if there are any issues with the station, they take care of it. If something happened with, with the wiring leading up to the station, I'm not, it's not as clear to me on that. I think EverSource is in charge of, up to a certain point, and the town would be in charge of what's in between. But given that we can apply for make-ready assistance as often as we want, I think if something did go wrong, we could apply for them to fix it.
If something hypothetically, if I may, Mr. Chairman, went wrong, that was either more than the $560 a year that we're paying, or if they have some limit in terms of if maintenance charges, normal maintenance charges exceed this certain amount?
Yep.
Is something like that, like, does the $560 cover it, or is there a cap, or there a deductible? I'm just trying to see, you know?
Right. My understanding is it would cover essentially anything that could happen up to, including a full replacement of the station if it just totally failed.
All right, thank you.
So, question on the parking. So I assume you have to have like an EV plate on your car to use the spot?
I don't know if EVs, I, straight EVs, I think, the ones that I've seen, do have the EV symbol.
So I guess, maybe, let me ask you different, Claire, it's, these are EV parking only?
It would be, right, it would be any vehicle that can be charged with a, with a charging cable. It could be a hybrid that's gas and electric, but it would have to be a vehicle that can be charged with a charging cable.
And do you have to be charging?
Actively charging? Yeah, that's, you know, I think that's a gray area. You know, I think if, obviously, if someone's plugged in and then half an hour later they're done, but it took them 15 more minutes to get back from shopping, you know, that would, it would be silly to sort of give the ticket.
Yeah.
But what if someone plugged in and left it there for three days? That's more of a gray area for me, and I don't know, I might defer to the town manager if there's an existing policy that you're aware of.
So we, if I may, we talked about this with the two stations in the Russell Common Lot, of EV parking only versus EV while charging.
Yeah.
And I, I think, at least until there's a certain critical mass where these are more in demand, EV parking only makes sense to me because of those sort of management enforcement issues that Ken just mentioned. But I think two years down the road, if we, or two months down the road, if we see there's an issue changing it to EV while charging, could be something we consider.
Okay. For the record, I have a car with an EV plate.
You have everything. I just think it's the way of the future. I think this is great. We're going to iron out some of it. I park when I go into Boston and I'm right next to where all the EV stations are. And it, when I first, two years ago, they put them in. First, it was just one. Now they're all full, all the time. And I think that's the way of the future, so we'll figure out what we're doing with this, this round.
Yeah, it lives the same way. It's just like, there's like five spots, and you're like, really? John?
Question, just because I'm not familiar with these machines. Did the person that's charging pay for the charge?
They do.
Where does the money go to? Does it go to?
So, so the Town of Arlington pays the, the electricity, pays for the electricity as it's being used.
Yeah.
But then it's tracked through the, the tracking system built into the charging station, and the individuals using the charging station, it's connected to their credit card, so they pay for what they're using, and that money actually then comes back to the town.
So does the town profit from people using it, or is it just a pass-through?
So we tried to price it such that we recover the cost of the electricity and recoup some portion of the capital investment and that networking fee. So we believe our price in the Russell Common Lot's about 30 cents a kilowatt hour. Electricity's 21 cents a kilowatt hour, so we have an additional price on there to recoup costs.
No, I think it's great. I think there's a demand for it, and free wiring and free machines sounds good to me.
All right. Further discussion? Motion by Ms. Rowe, second by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five zero vote. Thank you very much.
Good work. Thanks, Ken.
Next up, Trader Joe's crosswalk. Walk, excuse me.
It's, it's me. All right. So the next three, we have Dan Amstutz on the agenda, but confusion on my part. It's, I got it. I'm covering all three.
All right.
So this first one here, in regards to visibility improvements for the, for safety at the crosswalk, and our Trader Joe's and Starbucks, we're talking about that location and the heights just past the intersection of Paul Revere Road and Mass Ave. The Board's probably aware there was a series of pedestrian accidents or pedestrians being struck by motor vehicles at that crosswalk, which prompted us to ask Dan to take a look and see what short-term improvements could be made to make the crosswalk more safe, as well as looking at what some longer-term improvements could be made. So I think you've seen the memo that Dan has provided. He did a very detailed look at the crosswalk, worked with both the police department as well as the engineering division to have them take a look at his recommendations and make sure they were on board. So he's recommending the Board adopt a series of short-term improvements that you have laid out, which are all about creating more visibility, backing up cars on the approach by 20 feet and making sure that cars on the opposite side of the crosswalk are at least five feet away so they're not backing up into the crosswalk when they're exiting. With the only exception being, on the westbound side, closest to Starbucks, there's already an existing 15-foot gap between a handicap parking spot and the crosswalk, and leaving that at 15, but then all other approaches at 20 feet. This is his recommendation, along with DPW taking a look at putting on a stronger lighting fixture to improve lighting at the crosswalk. So those are the short-term recommendations that he's asking for. Excuse, one more. Removing the Mystic Valley Freemasons sign so that it no longer blocks the crosswalk sign, and we can find an appropriate spot to replace that sign somewhere else on Mass Ave. Longer term, he is asking that we take a look at and we can, Dan will continue to work with TAC on potential for curb extensions, narrowing of travel lanes, or a more broad look at the intersection as a whole and see if there's improvements that can be made. But as for tonight, we're asking the Board to adopt those signage changes and those parking restrictions so that we can create that enhanced visibility, as Dan's suggesting.
Move approval?
Second.
I got Mahon and Kuro.
Great, that's fine.
Discussions?
I just think, I, I saw Dan this morning, thanked him for the thoroughness of this. I would note that as we're looking at this area, I think in the Parking Implementation Governance Committee meetings, there's been an issue that was flagged there also regarding the fire lane next to Trader Joe's, and I think there's, there's some inconsistency between a previous Board vote and the way it was implemented. So if we've got folks out there looking at this, probably worth a take a look.
Yeah, also, I, I believe that the parking lot itself for Trader Joe's, one of the things I do in my life is design parking lots, and it is one of the worst-designed parking lots in the entire town. And it would be great to take a look at it because you get stuck in there in ways that are just, you know, when you're looking at the fire lane, you might look at the parking lot, too.
Yeah. Joe?
I think these are a good start. I think this area needs a lot of work. And part of the issue with the pedestrian crosswalk is that that intersection is really a mess, especially people coming out of Trader Joe's, because you're looking here, you're looking there, you're looking across the street, and then by the time they get through, they're not seeing the pedestrians. Also, I wrote this up to town manager. I'm there a lot. I, I won't speculate as to which business it is, but there's a lot of parking, parking's short there, and there's one business that puts cones in the street, which is just, to me, not acceptable, and I think that pushes cars back towards the crosswalk. So if we can alleviate that, that's going to take, you know, one step into alleviating the problem. But I look, it's a good first step, and I look forward to exploring it further.
I'm actually really interested to see if the light makes a difference, because I've, I've noticed myself, and I think it's partly because that parking lot is well-lit for its many failures. And, but you drive, and so it's like, it's bright, and then you're going into a darker space after it, and that's where you lose the crosswalk. So I, I, yeah, happy to support it and see how much better it gets. Further discussion? Moved by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor? Which is just, to me, not acceptable, and I think that pushes cars back towards the crosswalk. So, if we can alleviate that, that's going to take, you know, one step into alleviating the problem. But I look, it's a good first step, and I look forward to exploring it further.
I'm actually really interested to see if the light makes a difference, because I've, I've noticed myself, and I think it's partly because that parking lot is well-lit for its many failures, and, but you drive, and so it's like, it's bright, and then you're going into a darker space after it, and that's where you lose the crosswalk. So, I, I, yeah, happy to support it and see how much better it gets. Further discussion? Moved by Mr. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero vote. Next up, electric bicycle legislation. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually see, or thought I saw representatives of ABAC here, and if they would like to go first, I don't know if Christopher wants to take the lead.
Did you want to speak this?
I can, like.
Come on up.
Good evening. So.
Why don't you introduce yourself and?
Christopher Tonkin, I'm chairman of ABAC Arlington Bicycle Advisory Committee. I live up, just up by Trader Joe's, so I know the crosswalk extremely well, and the visibility of eastbound traffic, as you're a pedestrian, is extraordinarily poor. You have to get into the road before they see you. So, I'm just adding that to the last item, so.
All right.
So, the, this legislation is to try and clarify what e-bikes are and aren't, and how they should be treated by the law. Currently, the whole situation is extraordinarily muddled, because in some places, the Massachusetts law defines a motor as an internal combustion engine, and other places it doesn't. So, any bike that has any kind of motor could be illegal in certain circumstances. This is a way of codifying which bikes are which. There is cutoffs in terms of if you have pedals, what speeds you can go, and there are three different classifications. Class A, there's A, B, and C. I won't go nitty-gritty because it's a little bit technical. The other thing to note about this is that, generally speaking, classes one, A, and B would be permitted on bikeways, C might not be. Again, this is at, this is at the decision of towns that have bikeways in them, I think that's in the document I read. The other thing is that, that we have a contract of Lime Bike, and we will be extending that contract of Lime Bike. They are moving towards an all e-bike fleet, which means that we're going to have e-bikes in town, or we have them already, so we need to do something about it, need to sort of make sure we know what they are, how like, we quantify them, how we qualify them. This legislation seeks to do that.
Thank you.
Hi.
Mr. Mahan?
First, I'll move approval.
Second.
And I have one question. I read through the material, and I can't remember if I read this or I didn't see it, where this is electric, electric motors or the like.
Yes, pedal assist.
Was there language in there regarding, you had to be 18 or 16?
Yes, 16 to various.
16 and older?
I can't remember without looking it up, which might take me a while, as to whether that was in classes A and B, or whether it was just a specific, right across the whole thing. And also, you have to wear helmets if it's a class C, and people under 16 would have to wear helmets, too, because that's the law for all bicycles. So, it's trying to make e-bikes as bicycles, and then there would, all the rights and responsibilities of a cyclist would actually be imposed upon e-cyclists.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that, only because it does have that 16 and up, because this isn't just, I just envisioned something happening and somebody saying, well, you let my 10 or 12-year-old do that, so I'm glad, glad it's in there.
The speed thing, the way they're limited, is a 10 or 12-year-old can get up to those kind of speeds without an e-bike, assistance coming down a hill and pedaling like hell. So, it's, you know, it's all about control of whatever vehicle you're in or on.
So, you're saying you're not, you don't want the 16?
No, I do, I think it's good, but I'm just saying, you know.
Oh, I thought you were drawing my argument out. Okay, sorry.
Regular bicycle can create as much havoc, or more havoc if he so wishes to, which is not a good thing.
Sorry, if you've got something, you can, we can call on somebody in a, in a minute, but I'm going to keep going with the board.
I'm curious about what municipalities have actually adopted any legislation. I know that Somerville, Cambridge, and Boston are all looking at it, but does anybody have the system in place and working?
Not that I know of. This is a statewide, too, so it would prob, but I'm not sure whether it would supersede or what it would do to the local government.
I'm all for this, because I thought I might even be able to use it myself, but.
Well, the whole idea is to get more people who might not be on bicycles to get to use them, so somebody who is perhaps, you know, I don't want to cycle up to the heights because it's up a hill.
Right.
Might be prepared to use one, or somebody who's got a cargo bike and wants to put a couple of kids on the back can do that.
One of the things I was thinking, especially because of the fatality on the bike path.
Yes.
That maybe we should have a trial period, not as really a trial, because I think this is the way of the future, but more in, like, in six months to come back and see what kind of accident rate we have. And one of my concerns about the Minuteman Trail is it's very narrow, and now bike trails are, they're trying to get everybody to build them at 12 or 14 feet. This is my beloved client, Mastah. And I just, I see the bikes as adding more confusion to the bike path and more congestion, and I just, I want to be able to have this board come back in six months and say, this worked or it didn't work, and these, we need more regulation.
But the vote we're doing tonight is to endorse some legislation.
Yes, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I think in order to endorse it, I would like to think that there's going to be a trial period, when it, once it's endorsed.
Currently, there's no, I believe, no statewide.
No.
Requirement for bicycle accidents that do not involve motor vehicles to be reported. This is something I think that we've been talking about, that maybe that should be a requirement, because then they will be reported to the police, because right now, some of these things aren't logged, because there is no reason to log them.
Mm-hmm.
So, that would help, but that's another, it'd be a different piece of legislation.
Further comments on board, Joe?
Yeah, thank you. I noticed in here that for the first two classes of bicycles, that the assist actually cuts out at 20 miles per hour.
Yes.
Well, how fast would a, would an experienced bicyclist?
They can get up to above that, 22, 23, 24, without too much effort.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, Lime Bikes, for example, they, they cut out at about 14.7, so you cannot get them, and I, believe me, I, we've had people.
They cut out at 14.7?
Yes. So, you cannot get one of those any faster than that.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Just generally like to note that I'm glad to see some more lime green down on Mass Ave as I drive down, I saw that as the weather got better. I've been on these e-assisted, assisted bikes, and I think they're great, I'm up in the heights, and all I've ever felt when I'm on them is a little boost when you go up the hill. I don't, of all the Lime Bikes I've ever been on, I've never felt like I was going too fast. I think generally you're getting passed when you're on the Lime Bike, and certainly not, you're not going anywhere near as fast as some of the people.
They're not built for speed.
On, on the bike path. So, you know, I don't, as people hear these e-assisted bikes, they're not like little scooters that can push her along, it's just, and on flat ground, I don't think they even do a whole lot of anything. It just kind of gives you a little boost as you're, I feel more when I'm going up the hill.
That's, that's a general idea.
You know, for, for my area, they're great, so.
Do you get somebody, do you want to, come up to the mic and introduce yourself?
Adam Atkeny on 19 Miller Street, also a member of ABAC. I just want to clarify really quickly, the point about the age limit, it only applies to the class three bicycles. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion from the board? We got a motion by Mr. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This final one, transportation-related, is in regards to a Safe Moves for School grant that Dan Amstutz put together, again, with the help of the school department, engineering, police department, and we have been moved into the funding stage, so the state plans to fund us for this grant, but would like letters of support from the board. I'll be sending a letter of support myself, as well as one from the school district. So, we were asking for the board's endorsement of a letter of support that we've drafted and attached to the agenda for the chairman to sign. This grant is for improvements in the Stratton District, which is in, frankly, a lot of need for pedestrian improvements for walking to school. We've done a lot of outreach to residents in the neighborhood, they've, outreach to us, asking for help, and we think this could go a long way with starting to improve some of those concerns or alleviate those concerns.
Move approval.
We'll give it on to Mr. Hurd.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Yes, this is the route that we walked to Stratton School on, that this is sorely needed, and my recollection is that some of this was actually supposed to be addressed through the Sims Project, and I won't belabor why it didn't happen. There was a condition that, yeah, I won't belabor it, but this is, this is sorely needed, and this is a great, great piece of work, and I know that the folks who worked on it with, with Dan are very happy, so.
Thank you. Further discussion? Which one, Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Kuro, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero vote, thank you. Review and approval, host community agreement process criteria. Mr. Heim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board will recall at its last meeting, we directed this office and the town manager to develop a process for evaluating community host agreements. I hope that I have provided you with a sufficient memo to cover the basis, and we've got a heavy agenda tonight, so I'll just try to highlight a few things. To develop this process, I tried to keep in mind the scope of what we're talking about in Arlington versus some of the other communities that have, that have developed a competitive process. Communities like Somerville, Framingham, Salem have more licenses available, or potentially could have more licenses available, so we're talking about a total maximum number of free licenses, and the, much of the vetting of marijuana establishments, as you could see from the memo, is vested in the Arlington Redevelopment Board and the Board of Health, who play different roles in this process. Therefore, I tried to sort of do something that was a little bit akin to the way that you guys have engaged in competitive license determinations for package stores in the past, along with some of the models that are being used in some other communities, but adapted for the fact that most of the substantive sort of meat of site operation and control will be governed by other entities under the Arlington zoning by law and Board of Health regulations. The few things that are, will be important for the board to sort of make some decision on tonight, in addition to making sure that the general criteria are in meeting with the board's expectations for how you'll choose one or the other in terms of both a qualified candidate, as well as a candidate that you think is in the best position to suit Arlington's needs. One is whether or not you will afford any priority status to any type of applicants. So, most of the communities that have engaged in the competitive process have afforded some priority status, either to communities where economic empowerment is a relevant concern and issue, such as minority-owned businesses or communities that were disproportionately affected by drug policies, or applicants who are in active RMD. If the board wants to have a sort of priority sort of certification for them, we have to decide a little bit about how much we want to afford a weight to that, but it's one of the baseline decisions that should be made by the board. Second issue is the board's timeline. The process that I'm recommending would have much of the sort of legwork done by your relevant department heads or their designees, so that you would get some sort of input from them as to whether they had any concerns or questions about a given applicant. And so, I think that we can proceed on an expedited schedule in keeping with what the board, I think, had in mind. The last couple of things are, I didn't set a fee for this, it's going to take some staff time, Somerville's fee is around $900, other communities don't have any fee at all, and I should say that I think part of that is meant to reflect that a premium placed on trying to have a diverse set of applicants, some of whom might have more financial resources than others, to commit to this type of process. And then lastly, I guess I should relay that in surveying the departments involved in this process, the planning department continues to have a little bit of concern about some redundancy in terms of traffic and transportation criteria, given that those things are subject to environmental design review, but I think we trust that the board will weigh those things appropriately in terms of overall feasibility, without getting into a very finite review of whether or not something is sufficient under the zoning by law. So, with that, I'd ask if the board has any questions or invite any comments, and be happy to make any revisions to the process the board feels are appropriate.
Mr. Mahan?
I think I just have two. I understand that two areas, and a left blank, one is the fee, and you explained that. In terms of the amount of the presentation, is that something we should talk about tonight, or we can do that in the future, or?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mahan, thank you, that's, I have that right here. What I missed is, so, just to be clear for folks who haven't read the materials, the first stage of the process would be essentially a written application that would be reviewed by a preliminary review team consisting of the police department, the planning department, the legal department, a representative of the health department. All those folks would sort of conduct a general vetting of the application and the materials submitted there with. The next stage would be before the select board, informed by those written applications and answers to questionnaires, a presentation that each applicant would make, and an opportunity for the select board to ask questions, to try to sort of tease out who they think is best prepared to provide this type of business in Arlington. And I don't know how long the board would like to afford for that, whether the board is expecting a very sort of lengthy presentation, or if the board is comfortable with like 10 minutes per applicant, given the fact that it will have a written application proceeding.
I guess, want to discuss that now, or discuss that in the future?
I think we, we should, it's all on the table.
Okay. I was thinking maybe if we had an up to, that applicants are invited to give a something minute pre, present, you know, presentation up to, I'd say, anywhere between 20 and 30 minutes. I think beyond that, I think whatever we put there, they're probably going to strive to go close to that, so I'm going back and forth between 20 and 30. I'd like to say 20, but I'm also envisioning some people might think a little more time is needed.
Okay. I think it's a point, I just said, let's just let the conversation roll and see where we go. Ms. Rowe?
Over the weekend, there was a Globe article about all the large marijuana businesses, and I don't think anybody that's applying for our licenses is in that group, but I don't know how, and I, I don't know, did you all read it?
The article, yes, because I looked to see if.
Because they just kept making up names depending on the, the town, you know, and I don't think an audited financial statement would necessarily bring that to bear, it's going to be more on Doug to go and do the, the due diligence on, is this a company unto itself, or is it one of, one of the babies of a very large marijuana company? I don't, I don't think either of the people that have presented to us today, I mean, the last time, were in that group, but I just think, I'd like to know their background. And that's something that concerns me, and I think because this is a new business. I mean, it's kind of like the, when we were doing the liquor stores, we were very careful about the background of the people that owned the liquor stores. There was a lot of, I mean, there was a query check, all that kind of stuff, but it's more of, why are you doing this? You know, what is, what is your purpose? And obviously, there is, you need to make a good living, but, you know, what, what are your goals here, I think are important. And it was, we did it slowly for the liquor, and I think we need to do it slowly for marijuana, but you've already heard me say that.
So, it sounds to me like we could satisfy, correct, would we be able to satisfy that with a question under the operating questionnaire?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we can, I think that makes perfect sense to me. All right. Joe?
I have a question, and I have something I wanted to point out on the terms and conditions. The question I see here, the board will not formally score applications, nor will it issue written decisions. My recollection, when we had the last set of liquor store licenses opened up, that we did go through, and individual board members expressed their first and second preferences on the, for the applicants, and then we worked, I think, that's how I remember it, I'm taking it back six and a half years ago.
Do you think we did it in writing, or just on the fly at the meeting?
I think we did it on the fly in the, in the meeting, and I'm just trying to get at the heart of what, what you're driving at there.
So, Mr. Kuro, one of the things that's difficult for the select board and for applicants is that there's not a lot of meat to these, to this host community agreement process. In other words, even the alcohol package store license process is a little bit more supported by hard and fast things that select boards may consider. For the board to try to issue a sort of formal decision in some ways, I think invites supported by hard and fast things that select boards may consider. For the board to try to issue a sort of formal decision in some ways, I think invites a sort of level of scrutiny that's unfair to select boards trying to make this type of determination as best as they can. There's not a set of, in other words, there's not some sort of set of objective things that can be checked off on a box, or something like chapter 48 to support whether a decision is right in law and sufficiently supported by facts. I, so, and I also understand that there's, you know, some time considerations and things like this. With respect to scoring it, I mean, I suppose the board could do that. I don't, I, I wanted to try to keep the board's process fairly efficient in the way that you've conducted some similar decisions. You know, if you had to sort of score it, I think in theory, you'd have to potentially break, score each one of them, make sure that those weren't shared among all of you, come back to the next meeting, then share those for the first time with each other, so you'd be keeping with the open meeting law. That's the sense that I get, but I, I also, you know, defer to the board's judgment. If the board wants to hear presentations, make a formal scoring, I just want to be clear that all those scorings would probably be part of, you know, the record of the open meeting.
But no matter what, we're not going to be in a situation here where we're approving entering negotiations, let's say with four retail establishments, and we only have three available, correct? We are in a position to just choose what we consider to be the top.
I think the best summary I can give of it, Mr. Kuro, is that you could certainly not give three if you felt that three were not qualified.
Right, up to three, I should have said up to three.
But, but, but yes, in summary, I think you'd be granting only three host community agreements, because if you granted more than that, I think that you'd be putting applicants in a potentially very difficult position of investing extraordinary amount of money in a process that they would ultimately not be sure what the outcome would be.
So, the vote would be to accept what is presented to us, not to enter into negotiations?
I think what I would say is that you would be accepting the applicants based on what they've submitted and giving some direction to the manager to negotiate the final details. But again, it's my strongest recommendation, the board not engage in a lot of financial, to not try to negotiate the terms too far outside the box of what the host community agreement guidance is from the Cannabis Control Commission. Those community agreements are fairly narrow set of things, and the difference between the select board and some of these other entities who are granting a license is that they're imposing conditions that would ordinarily be imposed by the environmental design review under the Arlington Redevelopment Board, or are already sort of built into the Board of Health's regulations.
Yeah.
So, operating hours, for example, are things that are governed by Board of Health regulations, as well potentially as the special permit they would get from the ARB.
Okay. The last thing is, I think we need a tweak of wording under C7. I see the head of the parent advisory council for the Youth, Health and Safety Coalition here, and I'm glad that we have a condition here to work with the youth health and safety programs. Right here it says youth health and safety prevention programs, and I know we don't want to prevent youth health and safety, so.
Sorry.
Strike prevention.
Mr. Hurd?
So, just a question. So, I know we have to issue a certain amount of the special permits based on the package stores. Can you just explain the process? So, if we as a board were presented with these host community agreements, and we just kept denying all of them, what would be the retribution of the people that were applying?
So, what we've started to see in other communities is there's starting to be more litigation about folks who were not granted a host community agreement. Most of those early sort of matters have been more based on communities pushing the boundary of what they were considering as criteria. Some communities were demanding you made a certain contribution to a charity or nonprofit as part of the financial agreement in the host community agreement. And without commenting on that policy or practice, I think that that's certainly shown that there's a willingness to sort of litigate. I think it would be very difficult for someone to litigate a matter of the board selecting from a number of qualified candidates and saying, these are the ones that we just think are the best fit in Arlington. But it would be a little bit different matter if you had three or four folks that seem like they meet qualifications to open this kind of business, and you were effectively trying to zone out or put a stop on something by, by not allowing the businesses that were otherwise qualified in Arlington. I think that's the best way I can summarize it. There's no, it's a somewhat uncertain landscape.
Yeah.
And I think it's the best risk assessment I can make.
And I ask more for the public education of people who say, oh, we still don't want them, and don't, you know, don't understand the process, that we don't have the ability as a board to just stop this by denying all the applications that come before us. Eventually, it would go to litigation, and it would be, it would move forward, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Hurd. And I think it would be particularly acute as an issue for, example, like our registered marijuana dispensaries open and operating in Arlington.
Yep.
For us to say that they can't operate recreational, although recreational is allowed in Arlington, would be a difficult burden for us to meet. Unless it was, again, they, those folks may not get their permits from the redevelopment board or the Board of Health if they don't meet those criteria. But again, this host community agreement is not an easy thing for the select board to have to evaluate, because there's not a tremendous amount of guidance on this, and the role is fairly limited for the select board.
Yeah. And one other question. So, I also read something in the paper about the emergence of delivery only locations, and I just want, does that play into these guidelines? Would it be the same, you know, special permit that they'd be going for if they were looking for a delivery only dispensary?
So, I'm not quite sure. So, I don't think delivery is allowed at present from recreational dispensaries? I mean, maybe I'm-
It might, it might have been medical.
So, there are medical dispensaries. One of the challenges that the board has to weigh in terms of how you want to see it is that we're unlikely to get a lot of medical applicants. The medical, the requirements for medical are ironically steeper than they are for recreational under state law, in terms of what capitalized assets you have to possess.
Yep.
So, we'll probably only be seeing folks come in for recreational at this time, in terms of new applicants.
Okay. All right. So, real quick, yep?
I do believe the voters of Arlington voted in favor of recreational marijuana. So, I think that's-
Yeah.
We have to consider that in our thinking.
Okay.
And after you, Mr. Chairman. I said I had three questions, and I thought, since I brought the first one, that needed to be answered, and put the 20 to 30, we were discussing that. Otherwise, I would have said all three of my questions. So, after you.
Okay.
I'd like to ask my other two.
I apologize, I misunderstood.
No, no, that's what I said, is that what we're doing right now? And you said, that's what we're doing.
Sorry. All right.
You may ask my other two.
So, all right, so I'm going to go through, I'm going to talk about four points, then I'm going to go to Diane, then I'll see, I see a member of our cannabis committee who wants to speak. So, I think we've got four, at least four things about this that we need to resolve. One is, what do we want to do with the fee? Do we want to award, give any priorities to any groups? How long do we want to speak, and what's our timeline? So, I'm going to suggest, and then we can hash out on each one of the four, and I think it'll help if we talk about which one of the four we're talking about. I'm going to say 250 bucks for the, for the fee. I'm going to say, yes, we want to give priority to people who are doing medicinal and any minority businesses. I'm going to say 20 minutes, and I'm going to say as a timeline, I, like, I'm just thinking, I'm not quite ready to suggest an actual date, but I'm going to say, I think we should talk about submissions by the end of this month, or, sorry, yeah, not the end, sorry, submissions by like mid-April, compatible with the manager's office's time, and then putting it on the selectman, the select board's agenda in May. Because I'm trying, I'm, I'm just, I would, I know some, I know Ms. Rowe wants to go slower. I am definitely would want to press on the gas a little bit.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm with you.
Okay.
I'm just saying, yeah.
All right. So, those are, so, I would like, I'm, I'm, I'm not lying on the rails on any of those. So, those are my four suggestions. Mrs. Mahan?
Just to expand on one of the four points, as well as, I think, Mr. Kuro, am I correct that we also said that we would follow parallel to, as we do with the EOL alcohol licenses, that it's up to three, but they need to be spread amongst the three sort of districts that we have? So that, like, right now, we have two right in the heights, within two blocks of each other. I'm like, can, I don't see it in there, can we say that?
Ms. Mahan, I do think, I thought I had put it in there. If I haven't, I will definitely make sure I put it in there.
I'll go back to one.
That there's a geographical component to your consideration. Also, functionally speaking, the, to your point, there is a density buffer zone in Arlington. So, you can't have a recreational facility, or a medical facility, within, I believe, 2,000 feet of another recreational or medical facility. So, we don't want applicants to be granted a host community agreement for something that they're then going to have to get zoning relief from, although it should be noted that the ARB does allow for exceptions to be made to the buffer zone under certain circumstances, if the density buffer wouldn't serve a real purpose. So, I think that you certainly can consider geographic placement as a criteria, and I think you can also consider, you know, these buffer zones and other important policy considerations as well.
And then, my other two questions, just very briefly. One, because there was a story in the Globe, like, a month or two ago, about improper, the act of disposing, as well as what was being disposed from a certain, I don't know if it was medical or recreational, it had to be medical, marijuana facility. I didn't see that in there, and we did get 36 pages of information. I'm assuming that that, those criteria, criterion exist. It may be Board, it's under Board of Health, that they probably have that?
It's a good question, Ms. Mahan. So, both the Board of, the Board of Health and the ARB process have very robust requirements for both disposal of marijuana, and also, I think, I'm going to get the term wrong, it's not residuary, but basically, when folks, if folks return marijuana containers, they want to make sure that staff and other folks aren't basically rummaging through stuff to try to get out sort of residual, you know, marijuana leftover in some kind of, you know, bag or container or something like that. So, there's actually quite strict regulations at the state level. Our Board of Health pushes the envelope on those as much as possible, and then the ARB special permitting process also takes into consideration certain other things with respect to security and site plan, not site plan, but site management.
Okay. I assume there were, and there's no way, if you gave us all the information and all the law, it probably would have been double or triple that. I just wanted to make sure that it was there. And then, my only other thing that I was confused by, in terms what approval or disapproval we have on it, I know under the state law, and I think it's under the environmental review process, it outlines the parameters and requirements for outdoor sales of cannabis, I don't know what I'm supposed to say. My question is, I did see it in there very tertiaryly, is because the language is in there, it, we have to grant that? Or is it there something that, that's my question?
So, if I may, Ms. Mahan, I think there's a couple of different related issues that you might be touching on. One is that public consumption of marijuana is not allowed in the town of Arlington.
Okay.
So, you have to be in a private residence. Second, the Cannabis Control Commission originally started talking about things like marijuana cafes. That stuff, to my understanding, has all been put on hold indefinitely while they develop a regulatory scheme to determine even if that type of thing is going to be allowed at some point in the future. So, that would be something that the town would have to eventually perhaps deal with, but at this point in time, there's, there's no, you're basically, those concerns are primarily governed by existing state and local laws.
Okay. And like I said, I only asked because I think it was under the Board of Health and the environmental review process. It outlined how you give approval and monitor it, so I didn't remember when that was allowed to happen. But what you're saying is that's just sort of some people ruminating about possible, right now you can't get approval for outdoor marijuana sales, cannabis sales.
Not to my, yeah, to my understanding that-
I'll find it, where it's, because it's in here.
Understood.
It's part of the proposal. Okay. I'll stop.
Welcome. Why, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sarah Olgood, Arlington parents, member of the Marijuana Study Group. So, I'm here to request that the Marijuana Study Group be part of the review process when establishing and putting together these community host agreements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rowe?
I move approval of your four points, and the fifth point, which was to involve the study group.
Second?
All right. So, just first, Doug, did that get, is that, is there enough meat on that?
I could use a little bit more direction, Mr. Chairman, about how the study group would be involved. So, I could presume that perhaps what would happen is the applicant, the applications could be reviewed at a meeting of the study group, and they could express any questions or concerns that they had as well?
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And other than that, that was enough?
So, some priority for medical, mid-April application deadline to have them submitted, select board meeting in May, and $250 application fee. Is there anything that-
Twenty minute presentation.
Twenty minute presentation.
You also-
Up to, up to.
I believe you also said a priority for minority applicants as well.
I did.
Yes. Thank you.
Yep. I just wanted to clarify, now we can discuss an amendment. John?
So, how involved process is it to submit an application for a community host agreement? Is it quick? Is it like a one?
You've been-
So, I only ask because in my head, when, I was thinking 500, a 250 is fine, but it's really a minor issue in the whole process, but, you know, I don't want to get flooded with these, but, so you give a little more financial burden to people, you get, you know, people that are really serious about the process. If it's a whole long process to put these together, then it doesn't really matter, because people aren't going to go through it unless they're serious anyways. But just when we started talking about the fee, $500 just jumped into my head.
So, Ms. Hurd, I will basically take the board's direction here and develop, basically a questionnaire, and it'll be a fairly lengthy application without being so onerous or duplicative as to near the state's licensing process, or the Board of Health, or the ARB's process. But it won't be, you know, it'll, it'll take a little bit of time to gather the appropriate documentation, evidence of site control, things like that.
I'm fine with 200, 250, it's just 500 was the number that popped into my head when we were thinking about it.
Okay.
Hi, Joseph Lakach, CEO of Apotheca.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but one of the things I think that could alleviate a concern of having too many applicants could be that, as part of the submission, there should be a actual property interest submitted, so that the applicant has a binding interest in a property, instead of just randomly submitting a lot of applications. Just as a thought.
Well, I think for a host community agreement, they would need to, for us to approve it, they would need a location, right? No?
Doug?
I, I think that that's covered. I think that that's in the materials, that you need to have some evidence of site control, but I can double check that.
Okay. So, the answer is, we're, we're planning on doing that already. Is that right, Doug?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Clarissa, did I say her? Sorry.
No.
All right, so we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr.-
No, Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mrs. Mahan.
Laying on the rails, Rowe.
Yes.
Bringing up the rare Mahan.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, five zero vote. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this matter is related to an upcoming vote on the International Energy Conservation Code, and members of Sustainable Arlington brought to my attention that in a prior year's vote on the code, very, very few of eligible applicants actually, or eligible entities actually signed up to weigh in on what the International Energy Conservation Code should be, and that the town has the ability as, for the board to register as an entity, for the town manager to register as an entity, likely even the planning department, and potentially the Clean Energy Future Committee to register as an entity. So, I think having Arlington make sure that its voice is heard in the future on this energy code, and having some impact on what buildings that are built in the future are like in terms of their energy efficiency and their energy usage, would be a wise step. If the board did vote to want to register as an entity, it would take a one-time application fee of $135 to actually register. The board voted favorably, we could process this and then bring back any necessary information for actual votes on the code. I believe later in this, later this year, I believe in November. And I think that there's some representatives from Sustainable Arlington that talk about it a little more if the board would entertain.
Okay. They're from the board first, or just, do you want to give a brief statement? Go for it.
Hi, my name is Amos Meeks. I'm co-chair of Sustainable Arlington, along with Brucey. And I think Adam covered a number of things. of things. I would just add a couple of things that, and so this gets voted on every three years, and in the last three-year cycle, there were only about 450 people who voted on it across the whole country. So our relatively small number of votes here in Arlington can actually have a pretty big impact, and each entity can get up to four votes, so that one-time fee is four people, up to four people voting. And just the timeline for this, the deadline to register is this Friday, and then each individual needs to, the individuals who are going to be voting need to be figured out by September, and then the actual voting occurs in November. And I think this is really a great ability, a potential for us here in Arlington, you representing citizens of Arlington, to really have an impact on something that impacts Massachusetts and the whole country.
Thank you. Questions?
Move approval.
Move, Mr. Carew. Seconded by Ms. Rowe. Any, does anyone feel compelled to speak? Are we all set? Any discussion?
I think they want to speak.
Oh, you do? If you want to speak, then go.
Okay. So I'm Brucey Molten, co-chair of Sustainable Arlington, and I just, I would like to add that with, and Adam, Mr. Chaplin may have already said this, I might not have heard it, that in view of the town's commitment to be carbon neutral by 2050, this is a tremendously important part of the path to reaching that, and that our building efficiency and energy use is a big part of our carbon footprint. So it's about decarbonization, and thank you for considering this.
Thank you.
This is Linda Clark, just a mere citizen, very concerned about climate change, but as well as reducing a carbon footprint by adopting a more efficient code, it's also a safety issue. We're all talking about resilient communities, and in Superstorm Sandy, they found that buildings that had been covered by the regulation, residents were far more likely to stay longer in their, in their residence than those who were not. So it's also a safety issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion by Mr. Carew, seconded by Ms. Rowe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up, discussion, override and debt exclusion. So we, Joe and I drafted a series of commitments which are in your packet, and we discussed them at the Long Range Planning Committee on Friday, and my intention for tonight is for the five of us to discuss them again, improve them if we can, and I don't actually have a formal vote that I wanted people to take tonight, but I was hoping to get the five heads nodding up and down and saying yes, that this was the right direction, and then we, I wanted to have a formal vote when we have our new fifth member on April 8th. And so I was going to ask Joe, I think, to go through the commitments, and incoming school chair, Len Carden, to have a couple comments and have a discussion. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you open up the draft FY '20 override commitments, you'll see that we've actually, we've broken this up into five separate sections, logical groupings of commitments. The first is around exercising fiscal discipline and providing quality municipal services. The four items within that bullet, committing no proposition, two and a half overrides for at least four years, increasing general education operating budgets by 3.5%, general government 3.25%, and special education cost growth, funding that at 7% per year. Those are substantially the same as what we went out with the last time we had a successful override, except that our commitment at that time, as we all know, was for three years, which we've managed to stretch to eight. There is one nuance also in one D around the special education cost growth. I mean, we did include some conditions within that commitment when we went out the last time. It became a difficult clause to manage, and in practice, what has happened is that the special education has been funded at a rate of 7% per year, but excess appropriations, and Mr. Carden will correct me if I'm misstating anything, but excess appropriations have been banked into the Special Education Reserve Fund at the school committee for years when the fiscal situation is not, you know, is greater cost growth than seven. The second commitment is responding to ongoing school enrollment growth pressures, and this commitment says that we'll increase the education budget for future enrollment increases at a rate of 50% of per pupil expenditures. The current practice right now, as we've been managing through the plan, has been 35% of per pupil expenditures we've been using as a growth factor. I think we were shown some convincing material that was put together by the school committee and the school department to show that there really is a much higher level of variability based on incremental costs associated with each additional student. And I think anybody who's looked at the news over the last few years will know what we've seen with enrollment increases and what we will see in the future. The third section of commitments is called, it's build Arlington's future, and this actually concerns actually some new programmatic initiatives and some catch-up really, frankly, from some of the impacts of pressures we felt over the last, the last years. There are two sections. One is for the school committee, I think we talked about, the school committee has been working to put together a multi-year plan to address the impact of the previous enrollment growth and catch-up. That's been 27% since 2011. Prove instruction, close the achievement gap for high-need students, ensure safe and supportive schools, attract, retain, and develop talented staff. I think Mr. Carden's going to talk about those, those programmatic areas. And you'll see that what we have bringing forth is that there's a schedule of increases to phase in support for that programming. So $600,000 onto the school base in FY '20, $600,000 the next year, $800,000, $800,000. 2B is around support for two major policy initiative areas, one of this board in conjunction with the town manager and TAC, and one of the Council on Aging, excuse you. So the Complete Streets Initiative and the Age Friendly Community Initiative. I think we're all familiar with the Complete Streets because we actually approved it. Town meeting actually adopted home rule legislation around complete streets to ensure that new street projects balance both vehicular traffic with pedestrian and bicycle traffic. There are some incentives from the state. We adopted that. This board adopted a policy around that. We signed a Commonwealth Community Compact in this room with Lieutenant Governor around complete, complete streets. Council on Aging has, at the same, pretty much the same time, applied for, was accepted as an age-friendly community through AARP, AARP is an affiliate of the World Health Organization, which outlines eight specific domains of livability for cities, age-friendly cities where people can age in place and continue to make their homes. The first two domains of livability, one is outdoor spaces and buildings, and the other is transportation. The Venn diagram between those two goals and the goals of the Complete Streets is, there's a huge overlap between them. And so the proposal here is to add $250,000 onto the base budget for pedestrian infrastructure, you could read bricks there, and senior transportation. The fourth section of the draft commitments we're presenting, it's, it's really just, I would say these are all pretty much no-brainers. It's minimizing impact on taxpayers, particularly seniors and others with income challenges. Advancing the new tax relief programs, we're going to be hearing two of them tonight, and we, I think we also need to make a commitment to publicizing existing programs, removing certain water and sewer debt costs from the property tax bills, so reversing the debt shift. That is in this board's goals, and we have to see that through. Pursuing new revenue sources, we saw some great work on that tonight. And working with financial leadership to develop bonding schedules that will minimize single-year tax increases and debt service costs related to the Arlington High School rebuild, so to smooth, smooth the roll-on of those costs onto the property tax bills. And then the fifth is just protecting against future fiscal shocks and maintaining the town's strong bond rating, and this just reiterates the policy that we have followed for as long as I can remember, which is maintaining our financial reserves at 5% or better during the four-year plan. This, if we follow this, this plan, we estimate, and the packet shows, that this would fit within the bounds of a four-year, $5.6 million override with an average single-family residential tax impact of $379.10.
Ms. Rowe.
I like these objectives. I thought reading the complete streets part of it, I do complete streets for a living.
Yeah.
I thought it was very fuzzy, and I think you need to put more specificity into it about what exactly you're going to spend it on. The last time we talked about roads and how much money was going to go to roads, when I hear about complete streets, it's usually a town getting, or city getting grants from the state to do complete streets. There's a lot of money that's coming into towns and cities, so I think it's sort of a buzzword, but it's a buzzword that is not fleshed out enough in these objectives, and I would suggest that you flesh it out a little bit more, and I can help with that.
Just to follow up on that, I was going to sort of joke about it, but it is serious, that if we can put the line on to say to renovate or look into the renovation of the sidewalks in the center.
Yeah.
I would be all for that. I don't know if it's feasible, but...
Yeah.
You know, if that's the intention, and we can make that a little clearer.
And maybe in front of town hall.
Because we've been talking about that for a while, and that is certainly a major issue that I experience every day.
Town hall.
I almost fall, so.
Hope we were to add a clause just specifying that, including...
Yes, yes.
Even if it was just to prioritize and say that this money we...
Exactly.
Will go into looking...
I think it's just too vague. I think specifics would be great.
Adam and Diane.
Only because it directly pertains to the last two comments. So I, in talking with Joe, long-term, as part of the operating budget, we're talking about funding a sustainable mobility plan that would talk about pedestrian scale improvements, likely further flesh out our complete streets inventory that we had to submit to become a complete streets community. But should the override, should the board vote to put it on the ballot, and then the override be ultimately successful, in FY '20, next fiscal year, we would take some portion of that 250 and put it directly into sidewalk replacement in Arlington Center.
Great.
So we're, we're reading your mind.
Diane hasn't got yet.
I was going to give a point of clarification.
Sorry.
I realize it does seem fuzzy, and one of the reasons is we were way down in the bricks in two meetings ago at Long Range Planning, and I think there was concern that we were...
Right.
Balkanizing the budget.
So you went up to the...
We were balkanizing the budget.
Went up to the clouds.
That's correct.
And now you need to do something in the middle. I think, as Adam just said, leaving, giving examples would be a really great idea.
Diane.
I guess falling into the fuzzy category, but I think our colleague from the school committee, to me, what I'm concerned about, I really don't see to my comfort level in the override commitments, and then I do see, and I don't want to go too much into it because I see a little bit more of what the issue I'm concerned about is talked about, will be talked about by Mr. Carden. So I just want to put it on the table, and maybe it, it doesn't really need to be inherently in the override commitments, but if I had my way, my druthers, under special need students, I just want to put it on the table, having literally walked the course, had a family member who aged out at 22. If you are fortunate enough to have an IEP and have a special need son or daughter that either Arlington has a program, perhaps at the middle school, it used to be a BIP program up there that got phased out, or if you're, and I'm talking about the severe special need student population, and I can personally say they fall by the wayside. I went through 22 years of it. The only time that I had a positive experience is when I was able to get her out of the league school, a private school that was closing, and then the mayor was moving, and there was a program started at the Odysseum, but unfortunately only lasted for like 15 months. If you are a parent of a severely special need student, and basically when you go in and try to maybe get your child at the Cottin or some other school that really, I'm talking severe, and you all know what I'm referencing, it's next to impossible. I used to think it was because of me, and I obviously must have ticked off some people. Those services are not, even though you have the IEP meeting and they say you're entitled to this, and it continues and continues, and I didn't really talk about it when I was in the throes of it because it might seem self-serving, but I'm four years removed from it. I had heard the horror stories before I was in it. I lived the horror stories, and I know they continue on, so, and I know it's a small demographic, but, and I know there has been some discussion around that, but I would like to, it doesn't necessarily, maybe it doesn't belong, it's vaguely, you know, under the override commitments, but more when we talk about the dispersment of how monies for education will be relegated, delegated. I'd like to see some more, it says in there, you know, special education program, all elementary school teachers will have special education, you know, models, and it talks about the high school, and I would like to see some language somewhere, and maybe not in the draft override, that specifically speaks to that small but extremely needing services that I could tell you for at least the past 20 years, we failed because the simplest things, and one of the big things that I've found is, if you're a parent of an extremely severe special need student, all the good, when you go to the IEP meetings, the person that comes from the public schools that's there to A, represent, B, say, you know, this is what should have, should have happened, did it happen, C, this is what services, let's put them in place, and then D, make sure they happen, I can tell you notoriously, those representatives from the public school systems never did their job, and it was, it's pretty well-known amongst those parents. So what my, what my core, what I'm trying to get at is, is there somewhere, and maybe it's in neither of these two documents, but we really do highlight, you know, severe special need students, you know, who aren't fortunate enough to be in the Arlington public school system. So I figure I take advantage of that. That's always bothered me.
Thank you. Len, do you want to talk about the five-year plan?
So I'm Len Carden, Vice Chair of the School Committee and current Chair of the Budget Subcommittee. So part of, after I got elected three years ago, we started talking about doing a multi-year plan, and last year, with an override looming, and with a lot of conversation at the state level, level about increasing Chapter 70 funding, we said this is the ideal time to finally get it done. So we tasked the administrative, administrative team with coming up with a five-year plan to match the town's long-range plan, and we basically said, take a serious look of what's needed in the district. Don't, you know, limit yourself to any dollar amount, don't, we don't want gold-plated classrooms, we're never going to get back to kindergarten with 18 students, but what do you really need to run a good school system? Because we do know that with the enrollment increases, we have not been able to meet all of our needs over the last few years. So they did that exercise, and we had a change in CFOs in the middle of it, so it was delayed, and finally came together somewhat recently, but you have before you, I think, you have this, right? The list of the five areas that the team, the administrative team came up with. So the largest one, and the key one, is still doing what we have been doing, which is to meet the core enrollment growth. We are expecting over the next five years an additional 600 students, another 10% in growth, and so we have to continue adding classroom teachers. Again, we're trying to keep class sizes, you know, below 25. At the high school, they've crept up a little too much because we've been focusing our resources at the elementary level where the, where the largest growth has been, so we need to tap down some of those class sizes. we need to tap down some of those class sizes. We always, you know, we have to add staff, outside classroom staff as well, just to meet a caseload, so nurses, school counselors, OTPT, reading teachers, all of that. And finally, at our elementary schools, they've gotten so big that we, we've added assistant principals at two of them, and we need to continue to roll that out. So that, that's, over the five years, that's four and a half million dollars that that came up, came up to. We want to do some efforts in improving instruction. Those are things like adding back some, a small budget for library books at each of our schools. We've been behind in updating curriculum materials, again, because we've been focusing on getting classroom teachers over the last few years to, to meet the enrollment increases. And there's a need at our, at our elementary schools for a librarian slash digital learning specialist at each school, because we've got technology in the classroom, but the teachers are struggling with how to use it, and digital literacy, you know, we really need to start doing that at the elementary level. That's one area that, you know, we really need to, to add some effort. And computer science at the middle school as well. Next item is the achievement gap. This is a state and federal initiative, but it's also something that's very important in Arlington. It's, we do very well, both the state and, and Arlington as a district, with, with all the various evaluations and tests that we do, but there's still a, a significant gap between the, the way we, our overall scores and our high-need students. The state has a goal for, for increasing the performance of high-need students. They consider ELL students, special education students, and economically disadvantaged students to be high-need students, and we get a goal every year about how much we need to improve their test scores. So I, I would point out that a lot of these things, and some of these goals, are also related to enrollment growth, but we just put them in the, in a primary bucket where they, we felt they felt, they, they fell the best. So here, you, you do see improving special education programming that is for in-district students, but there will be additional programs added that will, and, not for the severe students, but for some of the students that currently go out of district, may, might be able to stay in district. We actually do have a significantly higher percentage than average of, of students that do go out of district. We need to enhance the coaching model. As the curriculum continues to change at the state level, we, we have a relatively young teaching staff, and the coaching model has proved very effective in getting teachers to, to help coach teachers on how to do their best in the classroom. There's a couple other things in here, again, all with the idea of improving our performance, improving the way we're, we're getting at these high-need students, and making some, some progress there. There's a small amount of money, less than half a million for safe and supportive schools, that's social workers, some social emotional learning activities, and adding back the part-time administrative assistance that we used to have at our elementary schools, which both will help with security of the building, and also with providing support to the principals and the building administrators, so that they can focus on, on troubled students, and, and the issues that crop up day-to-day in our schools. And finally, we have a bucket for attract, retain, and develop talented staff. That is to increase our professional development budget, which again, is one of the things that's fallen behind as we focus mostly on adding classroom teachers. And it's also, as we go through the five-year process, to bring our salaries a little bit closer to the average of the town, town manager 12 communities that we compare ourselves to. So those are the things we came up with. Over the five years, it's a total of 9.9 million. That's on top of our base budget, not, not what we already would have gotten under the existing long-range plan, that's on top of our base budget. Under the existing plan, we would have, we would have gotten 3.7 million of that anyways. We think we can find about 900,000 over five years within our own budget for this stuff. So that left a gap of 5.3 million, and the plan that's before you would actually address 4.3 million of that. So there's still a million gap, but this is a four-year, we have a four-year plan in front of you, not a five-year plan like ours. The enrollment growth factor that you're increasing will help us in the out-years. So we're very comfortable with the plan. It will, it will really be a visible difference, we think, in our schools. We thank Dan and Joe for putting that together, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Diane?
I guess, to my point.
Sure.
If, I know you're talking about, under number three, I would like to see some language and commitment to the students that I was referencing. I know you're saying, you know, there's money for special needs students to help them with the achievement gap. I'm talking about, there's no commitment to the severely special needs children who have no speech. There is no closing of an achievement gap. Those kids don't even get tested. Under state law, there's supposed to be modifications and things like that, and I'm telling you that doesn't happen. And it hasn't happened in at least 25 years. So what I would like to, if possible, because my thing is, I'm just now fighting the battle to try to get something written down. Just because you say it or I see it, doesn't mean it's so. But at, at least if there's an acknowledgement of that, and it's not a large universe, but if you, if one of, you know, any, anyone else's loved ones had to travel down that and saw, basically, how not only is there nothing out there, it's really to the detriment of any leaps and bounds, educationally, socially, sometimes just self-injures behaviors, that not only do we not do anything, by not doing anything or committing to that, you end up harming the, steps forward you could have taken, not only were they not taken, you kind of fall back further than you would have actually been. So I'd like to see some kind of, because I know when I've spoken to my colleagues here, and my colleagues on the school committee over the years individually, I haven't really done it like I have tonight at the microphone.
Yeah.
Everyone has been aware of my situation, everyone says, oh, yes, I know you're right. When I talk about the worker that came out, that gob, you know, wonderful woman, but cuckoo for Cocoa Puffs, kept calling me by my daughter's name, and if there were 12 other people there, and they kept reminding her, and she just couldn't, you know, get that. So I'm, I'm just trying to get a mission that maybe I can get a bullet point in there, so that it has to be addressed, and then, it's too late for my personal circumstances, but when those parents come to me, I can say, you know what, go in and ask what's been done under that. Because I, I never see that commitment to that very small, but they're, they're the young adults, children that have the most severe needs.
Yeah.
And not only we're not meeting them, we're going.
I'm happy to take that back to the administration and the school committee.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm just taking personal time.
Ms. Rowe?
I'm just so happy to see this five-year plan, I can't tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just think it's wonderful, and I'm, I applaud it. Needs one more bullet, as you know. I'm also really glad to see that you're doing professional development again, because that is key to keeping your good teachers. I know we need to pay them more, but if you're.
Yes.
Doing professional development, that goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, so my request for you to take back to the school committee is the, around the special ed 7%, is that I would really appreciate it if the school committee would make a commitment to the, when your funding, when your need for a given year is under 7%, to put that into the, the savings account to be used in the upper, in the, you know, the years where it's over 7%. I think, first of all, I think it's a good practice, and I think it also goes a long way towards, you know, smoothing some of the political issues related to the conversations between this finance committee and the school committee. So I'd, I know you can't speak for your committee, for the school committee, but I'd appreciate if you'd take that request back to them.
Yes, yes. I did want to correct you, that we, we, that's not a process we have been doing. What we do is, in one year, if our, if our budget comes up with an estimate of special ed being only 6%, we spend that extra 1% on regular ed.
Okay.
And then the next year, if special ed comes in at 8%, we take that back from, from regular ed.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it would be more clear externally if we save that money.
It would.
In a reserve fund, and so moving forward, we'll try to do that.
Okay.
I think.
I'm biting my tongue on that, but I agree with the chair.
Okay.
Not with my colleague from the school.
Any other questions for Mr. Carden? All right, any other general discussion for the, for the board? Thank you, Len.
Should we move receipt? Or do you want anything, or no?
I would, I, I just, I guess what I want to know is, is this something that people are going to feel comfortable supporting on April 8th?
When you're getting rid of the fuzziness, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Give me some.
If I could get my bullet.
Give me the front of town hall.
Free fuzzy, and I'd like a bullet if possible.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't happen.
So I'm going to, so just so we're clear, the part that I think I'm going to ask everybody to vote is, is the FY '20. So the bullet that you're asking for is going to be in the school.
That's different, yep.
Vote, as opposed to in our vote?
I agree with that.
Okay, and yes, Ms. Rowe, message received on the.
And I can help with that if you'd like.
What's, yeah, thank you.
So should I move approval of the draft, physical year '20 override commitments?
All, you know, all I need is your head to move up and down, saying, yeah, I think I'm going to be there.
Oh, okay.
All right, that was all I really needed.
Thank you.
Because I didn't, because I didn't think of.
I would have bobbed all night if I knew that.
All right. Any further?
And thank you for everyone who's worked on this, and I, please don't take my passion, as well as some of my, you know, lighthearted remarks, as anything, but just, and I do appreciate the time that the chair, Mr. Kiro, and, and our colleague from, Mr. Carden and others, and this, we went through, through this very quickly, but this has been months and months in the making, and to refine it down and, and get it to something that is cognizant, that everyone can recognize, I do appreciate the hard work, that I have nothing to do with.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Carden, all set. And when are you, when are, Len, when are you talking about it? Is it Thursday you're talking? Thursday, the, okay, thank you. And the finance committee is considering it on Wednesday, and I'm, I'm going to be there at the finance committee meeting. I wasn't, I don't think I'm going to make the school committee meeting, but I don't know if someone else maybe can. All right, articles for review, Warren Articles hearings, and just so, looking at the clock, it's nine o'clock. I plan on taking a break at 9:30 approximately. And not a long break, just a, a brief one. So we're going to take them as printed, which is specifically with Article 79, Resolution Overnight Parking Exemption Program for Medical and Financial Hardships. Mr. Heim, do you want to talk about, is it, are you the right first stop here?
I, I think so. I know that there are proponents of this article here to talk a little bit more about their advocacy for this, but if the board will recall, there was a lot of discussion about this article, and for the folks in the audience, what I sort of took the direction to be after the last meeting was to generate two options. One was to revise your current policies, so that you would create the exemption program sought by the proponents of this article without going to town meeting and having a resolution and discussion therein. I'm not sure, I'm not saying that the board is comfortable with this particular revision of the policy, or they're not, but I think that I shared it with the proponents. And essentially, what it does, in, in really short form, is it creates another type of overnight parking permit. So essentially, there are discretionary overnight permits, and then there's overnight permits granted via an administrative exemption process, where folks with documented disabilities who meet objective criteria, or folks who qualify for certain types of economic hardships, essentially apply to the select board office. If they meet the criteria, they basically get an overnight parking permit via exemption for, I believe I put the period in as a year, and they don't need to have sort of quite as public of a presentation about their disabilities, their economic hardships. So that's one option. The other option is the, the proponents provided the sort of whereas language. I'm, again, not indicating that the select board, or this, or the legal office agrees with the whereas language, or disagrees with the whereas language, but they provided the sort of rationale for the resolution before town meeting, and I drafted the, be therefore resolved, that this is what town meeting would like to see, sort of reflecting something similar to the product that I put in front of you in that former option. So with that, I'd invite the, well, I'll leave that to the chairman of the board.
Yeah, come on, is there, one of the proponents want to talk to, but come on up. Of course, feel free to bring a chair and.
Thank you.
So, just, do you have a long presentation in mind, or just a?
No, I wasn't even sure if I should present, or if you had questions, because I, I don't feel like the need, like I have to sit here and reiterate the justifications for why we're doing this. I know I did try to, the best of my ability to furnish, like, an FAQ sheet, trying to address some of the questions that I've gotten when I've gone to different committees or commissions, or town meeting members, or the public. You know, I know I was told that if I could to try to, to estimate, like, what the demand for this would be, and that's a difficult task, because it's really hard to see, like, how many, how many off-street parking spaces there are, how many private ways there are, versus, like, how many renters there are. But I did the best I could with the best available data, and, you know, what I could come up with was a range, I think it was between 770 to 1,048. I can't account for what that margin of error would be, but I just used the data that I could find to try to make an estimate based on how many people are homeowners, how many people are renters, how many renters versus homeowners own cars, a certain kind of estimate of how many parking spaces there are. So I, I thought of that. I also pulled, and I think I offered it, you know, the, what I could find of, like, how many parking waivers or handicap parking requests have been put in, in the past decade, that I think it was 28 requests have been made for residential handicap parking spaces since 2008, and 55 full-year on-street overnight parking waiver requests since 2008. And of course, it gives you different reasons why, but I can't fully assess, like, I mean, for, obviously, for the handicap spaces, that's for disability, but for the, on overnight parking waivers, I don't know all the details of how many people did for, maybe potentially for financial reasons. But obviously, that's not a very high request rate for the past decade. So it might be like that, it's an, you know, we do this, and it's a lot less than we're thinking as well. It's hard to decipher. I know one of the people I've been working on with did say, if the board, select board is concerned, like, what if we get thousands of people? You know, you could also do it as a pilot program, maybe, and have, like, a certain cap the first year, like, we'll give up to X amount, and then we'll do a waiting list and try to incrementally see how to account for that. That might be something I just wanted to offer that someone else mentioned, because some people are like, what if you're way underestimating this, and it turns out thousands of people will do it? But I just don't think so, because there are only, there are about 3,000, I think, 100 tenants who don't own car, who own cars, I think, in Arlington, and I'm sure not all of those people don't have off-street parking. I'm sure at least half of those people have parking. So I just don't think it will be this overwhelming amount, more than like 1,000 people. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. Another thing that I thought would be worth talking about really quick is that the ride just proposed that they're increasing their rates, and so that's another concern to think about here. I think I mentioned one woman who really was someone who inspired me to even put this forth, was a woman, she is actually one of the few homeowners I've spoken to who's adversely impacted, but she does not have a driveway. She cannot afford to put in a driveway in her home, but she has to take the ride every single day to the municipal lot and back to move her car, and she's already paying 315 each way, as well as the lot fee. So her rates are going to go up, and when I spoke to the Disability Policy Consortium about this issue, I just had a phone call with them again last week. They mentioned, the town may not be realizing it, but they're external, they, they may be externalizing, like, some of these financial hardships, not just onto the people who pay the ride, but then the state has to offer the ride to people like this one woman. Now, I don't think there's as many people that have that extreme of situation as her, but then the state, how did they respond? They then raised the rates, and then the, the people who are, have disability here, who don't have off-street parking and have to use the ride more, have to use it more, so it's the circular thing. So I think the town could actually, if they did implement this, this could be a way to relieve that burden if and when the ride rates do go up, because that is going to cause more hardship for those people who have to rely on it more, and may in part because of this ban. I spoke to the town of Brookline today, because they have an overnight on-street parking ban too that is quite strict, and they have a similar population, a similar town meeting setup. I'm not, I want to double-check, because I feel like I got a different answer when I spoke to someone last time, but Leslie Peterson, who is, I think she works for the State Democratic Committee on Disability Issues, she mentioned the town of Brookline, you may want to check into their, their policy on people with disability, and the person I spoke to at the parking unit said, if you have a disability placard or plate, unless it's a snow emergency, we do, like, the on-street parking ban does not apply for you. So they do have, they do not apply that to people with disability who have handicap placards or plates, at least according to the clerk that I spoke to today. And I was watching the ARB hearings from last week, Monday, when one of the articles was the one on parking, because one of the reasons I also considered bringing this up is because some of these things would either restrict, or even in some cases, well, it would leave it at the landlord's discretion if they want to altogether eliminate off-street parking at new developments. And one thing that I'm concerned about is, I read the MAPC report about residential parking in Arlington, and I found several very large errors where they were overmet, overestimating the amount of parking spaces and underestimating the amount of users, and I know that, because one of the buildings, which is Capital Square Apartments through HCA, I live there, and it was saying there are 32 off-street parking spaces, there are only 23. So they were saying, and there's an excess of 12 spaces, because only 20 spaces were used, but then it's like, no, that means 20 out of 23 were in use when they did those overnight counts, so they were a lot closer to capacity. And the other building was a block over, and I did a count there too, and they were way overestimating the number of units. I did call them to. I did call them today and said, do you realize you have some very large errors in your report? And the reason I bring that up is because when I watched the ARB filming from last week, just today, these are the charts and surveys they're using to justify these parking policies at the ARB meeting. So I just want that, the Select Board to be aware of that. I, I did use some of the MAPC data for car ownership. I think that's a little more concrete, because they did census data of who lives here and who owns cars, versus renters versus homeowners. But I was a little concerned about the survey of how many parking spaces are each renters' unit in the survey samples they used. And those are also a very small sample. I told her, if you go across the street to another complex...
And is this is all in service of trying to get the right estimate? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm talking, yeah, I was trying, in, in some ways, I was looking at this MAPC report, because I was trying to get an estimate. And in some ways, it's, it's like, it could go both ways, because on one way, it seems to say, oh, there's superfluous off-street parking. And I know that some people are saying that's why we don't need any kind of on-street parking waiver for people, because there's just too, there's already too much off-street parking. Now, I do think that it's not going to be karmageddon if we do this. I do think that there are enough off-street spaces that it's not going to be, like, pandemonium in the streets, but I do think there are buildings where they're at or over capacity, and those people need relief, particularly in some of the low-income housing. So that's, that's why I'm mentioning that, and because of these parking policies, it's something to consider too, especially if there is more affordable housing put in and they have less parking spaces.
So just, I, I want to get to the discussion about some of the things. Is there a specific, can you maybe come to a conclusion, or is there a specific point you're trying to make for us right now?
With this, I'm just mentioning that, like, I think the town, in making some of these policies for parking, are assuming that there's less demand for parking than there is, and that's, and so some people are, some buildings already do not have off-street parking, and they're being forced out onto the streets. So that was by, that's what I'm trying to tie into that. And if these parking policies go through, and new developments have even less parking, it, it's going to even serve as more of a deterrent to lower income or people with disability in being able to live here if there's not something like this program.
Okay, but that, I don't want to just, I don't want to talk about the ARB articles right now. I'd rather, like, we've got one, it'll take us long enough to get through this one.
Yeah, okay, I was just mentioning that that's something worth noting. I think that's mostly it, what I have to say about that.
Okay. Then I think we'll go ahead, and we'll have our conversation and see where we go.
Okay.
I have a question, just how the process is going to go on. Just my understanding from the last meeting, because there were lots of things on the table. What I came away from at the last meeting was sort of a two-part request, and my memory could be faulty. The first one, or I saw them in two parts, the first one was the Select Board's criteria, the way we ask the questions, how we ask the questions surrounding the handicap overnight parking requests. And a lot of good points were brought up, and I think it was Mr. Hurd that said, you know, maybe we need to modify what information we ask and how we ask for it, and we don't need to be discussing whether it's HIPAA law or anything else like that. And we would make those modifications, and I think Attorney Heim has done that. It's in there, I think, unless someone didn't see that. And I'm 100% on board with that. But it was my understanding on the second part, because with all due respect, and I grew up in the projects, Section 8, I, I lived the life, I think you're woefully low on, to me, the, the financial hardship, that's something that really has to be looked at and studied, because you say, you know, 700 to 1,000. You're going to get someone like me that's in the high thousands, but I, neither one of us, I think, have that knowledge, that, because that hasn't been looked at. So I thought when we left at the last meeting, that everyone was saying, we want to move forward with this, explore it, get the shareholders together to start to discuss it, so we can look at the nuts and bolts, not around the medic, the handicapped. And I'll tell you unofficially, it is correct, you know, if you have a handicap, which I don't, a handicap placard, or you have, especially if you have the handicap plate, unless there's a snow emergency, you won't be ticketed.
Not true.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Well, anyways.
Having one of those things.
So my thing is, what I was prepared to do tonight, but I'll see what the will of the majority of the Board is, is I'm definitely in favor of implementing and making those changes on how we set up our criteria for requests for handicap disabled. And I'm still on board with, I thought that what we left was, a committee was going to be formed, and they'd gather some information, but certainly wouldn't be done in two weeks. It would come back at a future date. But I'd like to hear what others want to do on this.
Joe, then...
Well, I think firstly on the, we've got one fundamental decision that we have to make first. And that's whether we, we want to push forward the resolution, which is the way that this was brought forward, to, to, to town meeting, or whether we want to take in the information that's been, been, been brought to us and solve the problem. If we're in agreement that there is a problem to be solved. I am. And I have a strong preference to that, that route. It seems a little odd for us to, you know, the more I've thought about it, it's a little odd for us to go to town meeting and say, we're recommending that town meeting admonish us for not making these policy changes, then we're going to come back, we're going to do them anyway. So I believe that we should do the, make the policy changes, fix the problem, and we've done this in the past. Not least of all, because this, this is warrant Article 79. And there's a special town meeting in the middle, and you could be two months into a town meeting, and I guarantee you, people are going to be really cranky by then. And then all they want to do is leave, and they want to go home, and it could go any which way to Sunday. Whatever that means, that's an old expression, I don't even know. So I think that we should solve the, solve the problem. The other thing that I strongly believe is that, that we, we should move towards an objective administrative process for this. Because even though we don't ask, we had an example just tonight. So even though we don't ask specifics about the health situation, and we were, we granted a waiver tonight without the, the individual even appearing before us, they volunteered the information on their application. And when it's part of our meeting, that's going on Novus, and it's being revealed to the world. And so I think that it just makes sense to make this an administrative, as long as it's an objective standard. And as Mr. Heim has put it, we are the appeals authority. If there's, if there's a denial of a request, then fine, then come forward, come forward to the Select Board by all means, as, as an appeals authority. So I think that that just makes, makes sense. I frankly, I like what the Town Council has put forward here, the, the general shape of this. And I, I would be happy, I mean, I think a priori, I mean, anything that we do could potentially be a pilot. If we were to adopt this, and if it's not working out, we always have the ability to go back. We're supposed to be going back and reviewing our policies and amending them if they're not working out as, as, as anticipated. So I guess I'll put that in the form of a motion, and then we'll see where it goes from there, if, if there's a second. So I, I will move to, to adopt the first option that the Town Council has put before us regarding actually changing our regulations regarding this.
So... Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
May I just clarify something for the audience? I think it's very clear to the Board.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, what the proposed motion of Mr. Kuro is, is that they'd adopt the policy changes sought by the proponents, and therefore vote no action on the town meeting resolution, because the town meeting action wouldn't be necessary, if that makes sense. Can we make that change under open meeting law right now? So we've properly noticed that this is contemplated under this. I'm not concerned about that. All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, because our vote will be no action. But then in the comments, we'll explain, we've adopted the...
Explain why we're doing it.
I'm just, I was just asking whether or not we can actually do it, or whether, whether that, actually doing it was properly noticed.
Oh, okay.
But I guess, but the, it does, a Resolution Overnight Parking Exemption Program, or slash, yeah.
Yeah, we've done that other times when people have come before us, and we've said, well, this really is a then Board of Selectmen, now Select Board. We're going to say no action, but because we don't, and then...
We just don't always do it at that meeting. We do it at a subsequent meeting or under a different agenda item at times. Okay. All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Kuro, it was seconded by Ms. Rowe. Mr. Hurd?
Yes, so I just agree with Joe in the sense that logistically, it's flawed for us to send, to vote, to send something to town meeting to come back and tell us to do something. We talked about this at length. I think we can revise our policies for granting these exemptions that would get, that would meet the objective of the proponents and get parking permits in the hands of the people that need them, just on, based on the fact that they don't have parking. And to me, we can do that without requiring somebody to make a proffer of a medical or financial situation. And I would just say, to the extent that we make this administrative, for, you know, I want, would want that to be as clear as that, that you have to meet these specific issues, so we don't have any sort of confrontation at the office. You know, if there's confrontation, then it shouldn't occur in the chamber, it's not at the office. But I think there's a way for us to revisit the way we grant these exemptions and come up with a clear criteria. And before I said, check the box, it says, list these items. And if you meet those items, then you'll get an overnight parking exemption. If you don't, then you know you're not going to get one, and you know why. Without having somebody to, you know, I think it, it's just not necessary for someone to have to go the extra step to prove a medical or financial hardship when they should be qualifying for these overnight parking exemptions by other means.
All right, Ms. Rowe, then I'm going to go to the crowd.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that that's a very good idea, and I think that one of the things that we have to acknowledge is this is much more of a problem in East Arlington, and I think for you lucky people that live in the mid-part in the Heights, you don't see it on a daily basis as much as my neighbors and I do. And I think that, you know, I'm going to talk about parking in my new business at about 12:00. You'll see that East Arlington is, is, you know, we are, we have, we're really having, we're struggling. So I think I really appreciate this way forward. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Now to the audience.
So I'm going to go for, all right, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? There's a woman up there. Do you mind sliding over and grabbing that seat there perhaps, and then...
Hi, I'm Susan Mortimer, and I, I wanted to reiterate that the issue of class in this issue looms very large. It's the elephant in the room. We're not asking this about people who can afford to have a place to park, and I should say that I'm happily car-free. So I'm saying that as a person who doesn't like cars, again. And I wanted to also bring up the fact that it is germane, what is being said, and the testimony that's being given at the ARB, because last Monday, the figures that are incorrect were used again, and they were used by someone who knows that the figures are incorrect, someone who parks every day at 260 Mass. Ad, and continues to say that there are 32 spaces when they're not. So I'm very concerned that this issue that is germane, that the, the number of parking spaces that are available in apartment complexes is being vastly overrated. And I'm very concerned about that, and I'm very concerned that the person would continue to repeat that when she's in that parking space every day, every workday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Darcy Devaney, Commission on Disabilities. I just wanted to reiterate that while we agree with Laura on a lot of these things, we did vote no specifically on the medical exemption part. We would encourage the Board of Selectmen to indeed change their criteria.
I apologize. Could you get a little bit closer to the microphone? Yep, thank you.
Do I have to start again? Darcy Devaney, Commission on Disabilities, right, okay. We, we did go over this at our Commission on Disabilities meeting. We did formally vote no against this particular resolution, specifically the medical hardship part. And that is because, as we explained at the last meeting, in essence, the ADA laws already guarantee that they could get a space from their landlord. So if you go ahead and give them an overnight on parking, on-street parking space as a result of their handicap, you are allowing that landlord to circumvent both the spirit and the law of the ADA. And we, we just don't agree with that. It may be that you could do something while they're waiting for that space to be provided by their landlord. You know, that process can take a while, but just in terms of the mission of the Disabilities Commission, we'd say, no, you shouldn't be doing that. They should be going through the MAAB process locally, and that will resolve that issue and make sure that the landlord actually does pay attention to ADA laws. We also wanted to say, we talked about it at great length, about the privacy issues, and we absolutely agree with this about that. It's very, very difficult. It does become public record. There ought to be some way around that. There ought to be more awareness that people don't want to discuss their bill, and especially have them in the public record. So I just wanted to say that part.
Thank you. I see one gentleman standing up, and then we'll, come on up next. Hi, could you adjust the mic and bring it up to your mouth, and you can move the chair if that's convenient?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great. Eric Poole, 285 Massachusetts Avenue. There's a reason that seven disability and chronic pain groups endorsed the warrant before you today. The BCIL, Boston Center for Independent Living, Disability Policy Consortium, Mass. Adapt, Massachusetts Chapter of Marfan Foundation, Northeast Massachusetts EDS and connective tissue disease support group, Arlington, Massachusetts, Chapter of the American Chronic Pain Association, Wayside Youth Association Steps Program. It's because of their unswerving commitment to accessibility for disabled folks, as well as their focus on the inherent dignity of protecting disabled folks from the sort of process that they've had to undergo in the past to get a, to request a exemption. I commend the proponents of this warrant article and remind the Board of the seven disability groups and chronic pain groups that support the warrant because of their unswerving commitment to the dignity of disabled folks and accessibility for the same folks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this issue? All right, so to recap where we are, oh, all right.
Good evening. My name is Lynette Martin. I'm a resident of Arlington. I've spoken to the Board of Select on this issue before. Thank you for letting me speak again. I'd like to speak in response to Darcy, who spoke from the Arlington Disability Commission. When posing the question, doesn't the Fair Housing Act entitle residents to an off-street parking space at their residence anyways? Not always would be the answer. While the Fair Housing Act entitles a disabled tenant the right to request an off-street parking space at their place of residence, there are several exemptions to FHA in this regard, and so not all disabled tenants would be protected. For instance, the FHA does not apply to residents with four or less units, or townhouses without an elevator. The request also has to be reasonable, which means landlords are not expected to have to purchase new lot space if they are over capacity, or to defy the laws of physics to accommodate their tenants. We think our program can offer a reprieve for those disabled tenants in situations for which the FHA does not apply to their landlords, or offer tenants a temporary on-street parking pass while their FHA request is pending with their landlord. I do think that perhaps there are housing situations in the town where the landlords need to be held more accountable, but that is not a reason why we should not be pursuing these policy changes. And I would like to also reiterate, I know someone else said, it's very disappointing to me that the Arlington Disability Commission has decided to vote no on this, despite the fact that six other commissions, or six other disability-related organizations have signed on. And in fact, I believe we sit on the Disability Policy Consortium, which has supported this, and has expressed concern that the Arlington Disability Commission is also not in line with this. So I'm not sure... So I'm not sure if there's some sort of bias or what's going on, but I believe we've addressed that particular concern, and I would hope that they would reconsider based on that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, I think for the proponents of this warrant article, you have, one, what you wanted us to do. So, and I applaud the Disability Commission for thinking about their job. It may not agree with the way you think, but everybody is different in this town, and I think pointing fingers at other people doesn't help us any, so please don't do that. Second. We really, you know, there are a lot of well-meaning volunteers, including on the Disability Commission, who spend a lot of time thinking about these things, and they may not agree with you, but, you know, this, this warrant article, we're voting no action, but we're going to solve it for you. So let's hear some happiness in your voices, okay?
Is there further comment from anybody here on the public hearing? All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Ms. Rowe, to change the policy, or overnight parking policy, to handle a medical and a income exemption.
And to issue a recommended vote of no action at a town meeting on the original...
Thank you, I wanted to clarify that. And to recommend no action on, with a comment saying that we solved it, or, no, solved it, that we implemented a policy that we think addresses the request of the original proponents for the comment. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero vote. It is 9:29. Let's call an eight-minute recess. 9:37, we'll be back. All right, calling the meeting back to order. Thank you for your prompt return from our quick recess. We will now move on to Article 26, Bylaw Amendment Billboards and Signs. And, Adam.
I have been on town council for that.
Should we...
Look pretty straightforward to me. Why don't we just move a favorable action?
Second. Hold those in favor.
So...
So I, I do know it would require, if the board was inclined, favorable action if, I believe it's Article 17, is adopted, the zoning article, but no action if that is not adopted.
Okay.
This is contingent upon moving this signage, law, into the zoning by law and out of the general rule.
Okay.
Just in a general note, and I'm thinking about this right now, I don't know why it came into my brain. In the past, the Arlington Redevelopment Board warrant articles that we don't have say on were presented to us in a way that we could talk about the policy. And I remember Alan McLennan and Carol coming to us with, sort of talking about the general ideas, and we don't have that this year. And a lot of people have said to me, "Why is the Select Board not weighing in?" And I explained the differences, but I think, in future, it would be good to have the Planning Director come and give sort of an overview to the Select Board.
So, Mr. Chair, I don't want to sound overly defensive, but we've not done that in my tenure, and at points in, during my tenure, when we've brought zoning articles to the board, the board, now with you sitting there, has made it clear to not bring matters, not before their jurisdiction, before them. So I'm happy to do it, but I, I don't want it to sound like we've been omitting discussion from the board.
Well, it's, it's interesting, because it was, I mean, I always felt it was a respectful thing to do, and, you know, that's what was my experience. And I just, there's so many people that are telling me what they think of the ARB, and I wouldn't know, because I don't, you know, they're not coming down to talk to doctors.
Sorry.
And I, I would agree with that. I did like that practice, so, but.
Board changes.
I hear you.
Next year's chair can worry about it.
Oh, whoever, God bless whoever that individual is.
Yeah. So we had a motion by Mr. Kuro, but I missed you the second one, I was missing Mahon. And, so is there any discussion? Are there any members of public who wish to talk about Article 26? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving if, giving a conditional vote, depending upon Article 17, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Five-zero vote. Article 38, set senior tax deferral limit. Mr. Chaplin, Mr. Time, who's...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board will recall, as part of its efforts to start developing more tax relief resources, particularly for Arlington's senior population, focused on fixed incomes, last town meeting, we submitted, town meeting approves the submission of special legislation to increase the tax deferral limit above the state's default of $57,000. That special legislation required us to then go ahead and vote to set what that limit would be, and there is a cap on it that's provided by state law as well, but the maximum number is set forth in the proposed vote, and I believe, it's my understanding, that that's a recommendation of the manager's office having sort of crunched the numbers. So unless the board has any questions, it'd just be a vote by the Select Board first for two purposes. One, to set the limit, because you're technically required to take a vote, not just to recommend action at town meeting, but to vote to set the limit, and then that vote has to be concurred, essentially, by town meeting.
No approval.
Second.
Mahon and Kuro, is there any further discuss, any further discussion, anyone from the public want to talk about Article 38? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Five-zero vote. Is doing that both in one vote is okay, Doug?
Yes.
Thank you. Article 39, vote authorization to deaccession town property, library, art prints. You've been waiting all night for your moment.
No approval.
I won't do that.
Very funny. Hi, I'm Andrea Nicolai, Director of Libraries. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to speak to Article 39, which, as you're aware, is about the deaccessioning of town property, in particular, the Winfield Robbins Art Print Collection. So, tonight, here with me are Kathy Fenley and Adam DeMolino, both trustees. Kathy Fenley was part of the Art Prints Working Group, also consisting of Board Chair Amy Hampi, and current Art Prints Coordinator Nancy Gentile. So, actually, can you go back to the original slide? Thank you. In the middle of this, this slide is a picture of, it's basically a photo or a scan of one of the 130,000 art prints that Winfield Robbins gifted to the town during his lifetime. Winfield Robbins traveled extensively through Europe and collected, in bulk, a lot of European portraiture, mostly black and white, a lot of it of European famous people at that time. On either side of that print are pictures of two of the file drawers of files associated with this collection, and what I want to do for you tonight is give you a very brief overview of, basically, the art prints through the decades, the struggles of past library directors, trustees, but I will keep it as brief as possible. In your packets is also a letter and an FAQ that will go out to stakeholders and town meeting members closer to town meeting. And what we're seeking, of course, is your favorable support of deaccessioning of this town property. So, to the next slide. Winfield Robbins, after his death, basically bequeathed $25,000 devoted to the care, preservation, and increase of his collection of, at that time, 130,000 prints. Next slide. This is a timeline of the sort of series of events from him establishing the art print, the art gallery on the fourth floor of the library, up through his death, his will, going through probate, and then his cousins Kara and Ida also giving time and additional trust fund to the care and preservation and increase of the collection. Next slide. So, the struggle or the questioning of this collection first came up in 1925, when the curator at the time was really concerned about the preservation of these prints, because, of course, it was a public library at that time as well, and so, thinking about the safety of the prints in the collection at that time already. Next slide. This is a letter about, from the curator, rejecting an offer of prints to add to the collection, citing the restrictions, because Winfield Robbins was really interested in portraiture, and he really just wanted the library to increase the collection with portraiture. Next slide. This is a curator letter to the trustees, kind of grappling, again, with the subject matter restrictions of the collection, and also citing the fact that there were so many prints that it wasn't even worth cataloging all of them, because they were already known to not be all equal in value and so forth. Next slide. Now, in 1950, we have the first, the first real expression of serious concern on the part of the Board of Trustees about the funding and the adequate, or the appropriate dissemination of the funding, and, so this is sort of the first sign of, of real, you know, serious concern about the collection, even though they're still trying to be faithful to the charge, so to speak. Next slide. So, 1958, the library director sought the professional opinion of the Lamont Library of Harvard print librarian, and the print librarian basically returned an opinion that, that the professional, that the prints were not really going to be of, of great interest to anyone but very, very deep, deep knowledge of, of art prints. Next slide. And then, this is evidence from the Smithsonian Institution that the trustees in the library were able to make a small loan to the Smithsonian Institution, so they, they actually still have Winfield Robbins art prints at the Smithsonian bearing this stamp. Next slide. This curator reports to the Board of Trustees, basically notes that the most successful exhibitions at the library incorporate a lot of local art and incorporate artwork with color, because, as I said, a lot of the portraits and prints are black and white, and at that time even, they were kind of trying to jazz up the exhibits. Next slide. This is some coverage in local media, our advocate, again, characterizing the fact that, or the, the nature of the collection. Winfield Robbins was really worried that art prints would just go away eventually, and so he was really keenly interested in, in collecting and protecting this format, kind of like a baseball card collection or postcard collection. Next slide. In 1978, the library eliminated the curator role and started paying an hourly consultant, and that's actually the model that we still have to this day.
I remember Jim, Jim Fish did that, and he threw out...
Very good.
He threw out, I worked then, urging books, and I almost got fired because I was taking cards and showing books that were really important, like seven of them in total. They hadn't been taken out in two years, so I remember Mr. Fish.
Well, now we're in the era of Mary Ellen Loud, so here we are in the 80s, where the library addresses the consultant role again and expresses concern, basically citing the letter of 1958, you know, about how the curator really shouldn't spend any time at all cataloging more of the collection. Next slide. In 1986, that was the first request for town council's opinion on, sort of the, what to do legally with the collection, if it's possible to dispose of the collection. Next slide. This is, again, around that same era, a letter from the BPL Keeper of Prints, the Boston Public Library Keeper of Prints, who offered a, an opinion about how, you know, they admired the library's efforts to care for this collection, but ultimately saw this, these efforts as being unsuccessful, kind of Sisyphean, if that's the right pronunciation of that. This is a letter from the Arlington Historical Commission, again, agreeing with this idea that the, the collection really wasn't worth keeping in Arlington, that the local population wouldn't really have that much interest in this, this collection, anyway. Next slide. 1989, the town council at the time returns the opinion that the prints are, in fact, property of the town, so, because Winfield, it, it had to be established that it was an outright gift to the town, so that's where we wound up at that time. Of course, this was also the time that the library was approaching a building product, project, so it was, the focus could not be on this deaccession project, even after this opinion was returned and, and a legal path was established. Next slide. This is the appraisal summary in 1990. The appraisal was done by James Bergquist, who was a prints expert, and actually, he's still alive. Anyway, he assessed the collection and kind of suggested that it should be sold in bulk. Next slide. This letter of advice came from Marjorie Con, who, Cohn, who is a resident of Arlington and also the former prints expert at the Wirehauser Collection, or the Carl Wirehauser Collection. She is basically recommending that, again, the library explore, doing away with the prints, that no museum locally would be that interested. Next slide. This is, again, a few years later, a memo from town council, really kind of, I mean, I included this not to insult the former town council, who was really being very candid about her knowledge of art prints, but to point to the fact that anyone who's had anything to do with these art prints ultimately comes to the conclusion that they need information from an expert. I mean, I certainly wasn't hired for my expertise in art prints, and, and every successive library director and town council has kind of grappled with this, this sort of specialized area of knowledge and what to do with it, so. Go ahead. And finally, we're up in present day, the appraisal by the Child's Gallery. I think we might have missed a slide, actually. Can you go? Oh, no. Never mind. That's it. So 18 years after the most recent appraisal, which was done in 2001, we have comments returned from Richard Biano, the president and appraiser of, of the art, sorry, the president of the Child's Gallery and the appraiser of, of the art print collection, basically saying that the collection has decreased in value by 25% since 2001. So, this is all to say, could you go to the next slide? Okay, so this is, this is an email from Marjorie Cohn, just a few days ago. I, I actually requested her permission to include her letter, and she wrote this comment back, which I thought was interesting. Her opinion has not changed, is, is why I included this. And just a couple more. I wanted to show you the physicality of the collection, so this is the art prints room on the fourth floor. If you've ever been up to the rotunda, there's a door that no one goes in, there's a, a room that no one enters, it's the art prints room, and this is where we keep a good portion of the prints. They're on either side of the space, and if you could go to the next slide. Balance of the collection is also kept in the fourth floor conference room. So both sides of the conference room are lined with cabinets, and those cabinets all contain art prints. So, I also include an image of the key and the, the mechanism that locks the cabinetry, because I think it's interesting to see that it's really not much better than childproof cabinets in terms of protecting the collection. So, I think there's just one more slide, just, a thank you slide, but I wanted to point out that what strikes, what strikes me is that the identity struggle of the library, you know, back in the day when these prints were given, so are we a library, are we an art museum? That identity struggle has really come and gone over time, and we're, we're a public library. I mean, we serve the living, breathing people of Arlington today, and I, we talk a lot about space in the library, and we talk a lot about the value of that space, and the square footage that these art prints take up, I, I think about, you know, what we allocate in terms of space in the library. We are very careful about it. Library, library space is very precious, and so when we establish the local author shelf, for example, when we establish art gallery space, we just revised the art print, or the art exhibit space policy to make it more friendly to groups in town these days who want to show their artwork in the library. This is what I see as fulfilling the mission of the library in present day, and I, I, again, would appreciate your, your positive action on this, this item.
Sorry. I was going to say, move approval?
Second.
Okay.
19 minutes. I said, you had me at, at one and a half.
I still, I appreciate the opportunity to share all that information. I think it'll be interesting to those at home who may wonder about this, this project.
Has anybody said that they're against the deaccession?
Not so far.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's a, it's a good question, because this is not a Berkshire Museum or a Rose, Rose Museum situation by, by a long stretch. I mean, I was reading your, your letter, and just to put this in perspective, this sentence just blew me away. Put end to end, the prints would cover over 30 miles, stacked the tower of storage blocks... Stacked, the tower of storage boxes would reach 13 stories. We're talking about a number of stories out on Mass Ave. 13 stories worth of useless art, really. I mean, are barely valuable, our art prints. I learned a lot more about this last year. Many of us know Howard Winkler, know and love Howard Winkler, who was writing an article for the Arlington Historical Society and he wanted more information about this whole issue with the art prints. And so I worked it out and Mr. Heim sat down with us, was very enthusiastic, showed us a lot of these documents that are in the slides right now. I think you've practically turned him into a librarian with this, with this issue. He was very excited to show us these, these documents. But, yeah, this, this is important, I think, to clear your, your space and everything, but there really are two sides of this question too and stop me if this is prejudicial to anything. But in addition to deaccessioning these prints, which are taking up space and are not consistent with the library's mission anymore, there's also significant trust that's been built up that I don't think we discussed here, that, that we've not really been able to, to utilize to the benefit of, of, of the library as, as Winfield Robbins wanted. Are you at liberty to talk about that and if we were able to prove, you know, that the trust has been frustrated, how that might be repurposed, the trust funds?
So, Mr. Kuro, what Mr. Kuro is referencing is that, as in the written materials, there's a rough, approximately $1.3 million dedicated in trust to what sometimes is jokingly referred to as the mostly useless art collection. And I, I make that joke not because I'm an expert in art, but because the Child's Gallery is an expert in art and you've seen documented, you know, over 50 or 60 years, all these efforts to appraise this collection and what it is tantamount to is having a collection of Elvis stamps, except like it's the Elvis of, like Britain and they're not worth anything taking up a full floor. So, the only way to access this fund would be, in theory, to basically deaccession the art prints and to say that the fund's no longer serving a municipal, a valid charitable purpose. I don't want to frame that as some sort of black and white issue. There are a number of procedural steps that would have to be taken in order for the libraries to potentially have access to that fund, those funds. But if the town voted to deaccession the art prints and the trusts no longer served a really valid charitable purpose, the libraries would most likely be the place that that money would go to benefit. And there's a whole bunch of things that sort of have to happen involving the division of public charities, involving probate, but the long and short of it is, yes, one potential benefit of this would be that these trusts could be repurposed for the benefit of the libraries in a more germane manner to their current operation. And I would, and I should say that one of the things that's really important to say at the outset is that the doctrine of CIPRE that, that, that involves the use of trust funds that are no longer serviceable essentially, does mean that the monies are supposed to go to the next closest possible valid charitable purpose. And the Robbins family established this library and therefore there's a really, you know, tidy, direct connection between funds for what, you know, is kind of like a glorified stamp collection and this right library that they also, they also built and loved very much. So it's not as if we're not respecting what the Robbins family would have wanted for this, for these funds.
I think it'll just be important for town meeting to understand that, that there is financial value in deaccession of the prints, but it's not a direct pro quo, it's just by virtue unlocking access to funds.
I thought that was clear in what we got.
Yeah.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? All right, seeing none. We've got a motion by Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Kuro. All those favored, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Five zero vote. Thank you very much. Next up, Article 40.
I know we should ask them to stay.
Yes, we should.
Library peoples, please stay.
Yeah.
Can you stay just for this one?
Kathy and Andrea, can you hang around for this, for this next discussion? Could you, for this article, please? Yeah, oh, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we tabled it because we said, what did the library trustees say?
Yes. And I did meet with the...
Sorry, could you introduce yourself?
I'm, sorry, Andrew Fisher, Precinct Six. I did meet with the trustees on March 12th. They clearly welcomed the discussion, saying that the original plan was to evaluate after a couple of years' experience with the meters and about two years have passed. I was surprised that, I guess you wouldn't be surprised, but the discussion lasted about 35 minutes. I'd say, well, the trustees did want to examine how the parking system's functioning now. I'd, I'd say the majority, they're, they're happy with the, the value of the turnover of the current system and they were not interested in any drastic changes. One, one person was adamantly opposed to the dollar an hour cost and thought that should be reduced or changed. So, the general consensus was not, very briefly, they did express frustration with not having the 15 minutes free in the back lot, not having specific meters paired with each car. And that's for them to talk with you, but they, they expressed desire to get together with you and make some improvements. You asked me to bring you a substitute motion and I've utterly failed to, and I, I would just like to say that it's going to be of the following sort. Resolved that the town of Arlington shall honor the library bill of rights, that the library parking shall be equally convenient to all regardless of ability to pay. And we all know there are people of short means, I won't bore you with that. To me, it would be an easy experiment to try reducing it to 25 cents an hour and the turnover would be caused by the threat of a ticket. The trustees were not impressed by that because they felt 25 cents an hour would be a magnet, but, you know, it's, that's the long and the short of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone on the board with discussion or should I seek further if there's anyone who else wishes to speak or is anyone ready to make a motion or?
No, well, that's what he hears.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak? I'm not seeing anyone rocking into the microphone.
No action.
Mrs. Mahon moves no action, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Just to be clear, anyone, public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? Any further discussion from the board? We have a mo, a motion of no action by Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you for bringing it up. And if the library trustees want to talk to us about the parking implementation group, I think would be happy to talk about revisions, just, you know. All right. Next up, Article 43, Home Rule Legislation Means Tested Tax, Senior Taxpayer.
Get out now while you can.
Adam, are you the first one here or is it Doug?
Well, so I guess I can talk conceptually and Doug can answer any legal questions the board might have. So this is something we started to talk about last year and I think mutually agreed to, to wait till, till this year to be able to do some more work. So I know Doug has provided you in his memo, some of the criteria, or the criteria that are included in the Sudbury model. And the general idea here is to create a circuit breaker program where based on your income, you are capped at a certain amount of property taxes to be paid. But unlike any other property tax program we have for various hardships in the community, this would not be covered by the overlay. Whatever taxes aren't paid by qualifying residents would be redistributed among other residents in town. So I don't know if it made it into Doug's memo, I believe it did. So in Concord, they had approximated that 200 residents were eligible and at the outset estimated that that would increase the average property tax bill otherwise by $70 a year of all 200, you know, projected eligible took the town up on the offer. We, we certainly know how many people have homes of a certain assessed value. We can figure out how long people have lived in their homes. The item that we've struggled to figure out is how to connect that to income with any certainty. So I've talked to both the town managers in Sudbury and Concord and neither were able to tell me how they established their, their estimates, but they're both going to figure out how they established their estimates and follow up with me. So I, I can't provide the board tonight what the estimates are for the impacts in Arlington, but in terms of how it would function, conceptually, if the board was so inclined to vote, conceptually, to adopt a program like this or recommend a program like this tonight before the final vote and comment, we could certainly give a better approximation of what the impacts would be on the average taxpayer.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
So, I'll just say that my comment on this is that this is a, this is really, to me, this is a really big deal because it is taking what's otherwise a, a very flat tax and making it at least a little bit progressive, which is one of the things that Massachusetts really struggles with because its income tax is, you know, fundamentally a flat tax and we don't have anything progressive in it and most of our, our property tax in general is fairly flat and then we do things like gas taxes, which is arguably a regressive one. And it's just, this is like one of those, it's a bigger deal, I think, than it looks. But I think it's, I, I'm personally am, am happy to support it. Joe?
The, the one issue that I have in the, this Sudbury model, I mean, we, this came up when Mr. Adosia came in front of us with his proposed proposal.
CPA.
On CPA, is, is this, this issue of requiring that, that residents who are applying for this be living here for 10 years? I think in practice, probably, most of the people who would be in this situation with the qualifying would have been here for an extended period of time. But it just, it rubs me the wrong way that we would, we would, you know, set off a program like this and say that you cannot apply for this. You know, if you're a senior, you, you moved to town and you're paying, you're paying taxes, you're a homeowner, you should be able to apply for this, you know, regardless of how long you've lived in town. So that's the only piece of this that I, I have some real hesitation about, is including that as a criterion.
It's, it's in there?
Well, it's in the Sudbury language. We don't have to, it's in the Sudbury language. So I think, I, I think we're just taking a vote in concept and we're going to get final language, but I, it, it, yeah, it, it's a little bothersome here. The, the other question that I, I asked and I, I think it's just something we have to think about and, and I'm sorry, this is yet another thing that we've got in front of us that's connected to actions the redevelopment board is taking, but accessory apartments, if they're approved by town meeting, I, I asked the question today, I didn't realize, apparently, that is taxed as a whole entity. So, it's just something to bear in mind. So, if, if someone, you know, has an in-law move in, you know, an elderly in-law, they're not going to be able to, in all likelihood, be able to take advantage of this if the income of the whole household is...
Yeah, and not only, even if, even if that person had been there, it would, because it would, it would have to be a house that's under the average.
Yeah.
Joe, I agree with you about the 10-year part of it because you can imagine so, an older family moving here and then one of the two of them dying?
Yeah.
And then, you know, they don't have the income that they want to have. So I, I do think we should look at the, the number of years and maybe take that out.
John?
I just reiterate that, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, when I started before in the last Warren article, you know, I, it just, it's counter to the purpose of implementing this sort of exemption. It's need based, it's people that are, you know, whether you've been here 10 years, five years, the debt exclusion and the override is coming up in the next couple of years. So, that's, this is what, one of the reasons we're exploring these options for, to help alleviate the process for people. So I don't, it seems arbitrary to me.
Yep, sounds good. And I'll say that I, sorry, did you have a...
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Another, did I read correctly that one of these models had effectively a limit to like how much money that could be distributed, like redistributed? Like there's some, I may have been, I think it was the Sudbury one where it was like, where it was like a, there's something about the, I may have been misreading what the intent about what it was.
They say it's a state circuit breaker?
Yeah. Well, it was like if once, if there is a certain amount of the, of money that is distributed, a dollar cap on all the exemptions granted by this act equaled a .5% of the fiscal year's total resident property tax. So that's saying that like, that's limiting, you couldn't, you couldn't move too much around, is that...
Yes.
That, that's great, Mr. Kuro. I think that, I like that feature, especially, and it's something that we can revisit in future years if we say, you know, if we bump that cap every year, then let's talk about it. But otherwise, I think that'll help people not, know that there's a upper bound to how much change there is. Adam?
I, I didn't mention in the board, I'm sure, sure saw, but I think it's worth mentioning for those here and those at home, that if the board was to adopt a program that looked like this and town meeting adopted it, it would still need a special legislation to be passed and a townwide ballot initiative to be passed. So there, there would need to be really community-wide buy-in for this to go forward as well.
So anyone here, we should speak on this issue? I'm not seeing anybody. We've got a motion by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Is there any further discussion? So this one's probably a lot of writing before April 5th. No? Not that much?
I, I, I feel pretty good about this, Joe.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, Article 46, Acceptance of Legislation, Establishment of Commissions on Disability Fund.
Bring your chair, bring your chair. I should. No, we just wanted to, first of all, my name is Cynthia D'Angelo. I'm the chair of the commission and Darcy, Bethany, who's another commission member who I think you know. First of all, we wanted to apologize because apparently we were on your docket last month, but we didn't know, so we didn't show for that reason. So we didn't want you to think that we didn't care about our warrant. The second thing is we're asking to suspend the warrant tonight, actually without prejudice until next year's town meeting. And instead, Adam, I don't know if you want to jump in, but Adam and I, Adam came to our commission meeting last Wednesday and asked us to work with the finance committee and, I'm actually going to go Wednesday night and we're going to talk about some funding. It's about $25,000, we're hoping, and we're going to use that money this year because it turns out that we, we didn't quite plan well enough, I guess, for the finance committee to understand kind of what we were asking for. So they weren't going to potentially give it to us. So, we are taking the better route, which is to spend this year working with the finance committee, showing them how we would spend the money, helping to get, just work together essentially, and also have our priorities be the ADA, your survey, which we're working closely together and try to figure out what are the best ways that we can spend the money and hopefully get some credibility with the folks and next year when we're before you, they'll say yes. How's that? Does that sound...
Yeah. So I'll, I'll simply add, so I, I think I mentioned it briefly when this item was on the select board agenda several meetings ago. The, the finance committee's main concern as expressed to me was the balkanization of funds, as Mr. Kuro mentioned in regards to another matter. They like the idea of handicap parking violations going into the general fund, but at least prior to a vote, didn't have concern with considering requests by the disabilities commission to try to get the work done that they wanted to get done. So Cynthia and Darcy and the other commissioners did great work just over the past couple days, putting together a very detailed list of $25,000 worth of spending they'd like to do in FY '20. Like you said, they're going to go there Wednesday night and though I can't, I, I don't know how the finance committee will vote, my sense is they will look favorably upon that request because you put that plan together, it's going through the appropriations process and it doesn't, you know, it isn't the balkanization of funds, it's funding like everybody else gets funded.
And hopefully we will get them done. There's about 50 other towns that have actually done it the way we're requesting, but I don't think we were ready for that just yet. So, we just wanted to make sure that you do, that we, we actually waited all this time just to tell you. just to tell you that we were suspending the warrant.
I'll be there Wednesday, too, so.
Can I just make one other comment that's kind of off, a little bit off topic?
So long as it's reasonably brief.
It's gonna be very brief. I just wanted to make a comment regarding that, that comment that was made earlier about our biases on the commission, and I just want to speak on behalf of the members. First of all, every one of our commissioners has a handicap. So there was no bias as to why, we felt like it was not, and we've argued this point a little bit, we've been going back and forth about staying within our bandwidth of what we're supposed to be doing, and we didn't know if the financial and the medical needs really fell into our preview. And that the handicap piece, we know that they're, they're well cared for under our guidance, if you will, and that we weren't, we weren't worried about that piece. And so we felt a little uncomfortable, but it was, there was no bias. And I just want to say it publicly because they're very hardworking people. I mean, they were, Sunday, Sunday, we put that budget together, so it was our full Sunday afternoon, so I want people to know, and you've got great volunteers in this community, and they work hard. So, thank you.
Yeah. I would, I would say that we definitely, I mean, we, we know, like all other committees are, like, you know, the members are reviewed by, you know, the town manager or others, they're appointed by us, like, we, we know they're good committees, they're good people doing good work. And so we really do appreciate our volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Make a motion of no action.
Second.
Is there, this is a public hearing, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
Hi, Julie.
Commission on Disabilities. Sorry, excuse me. Yeah, yeah, yeah. See, I didn't cross one out yet. I was like, that doesn't make sense. Endorsement of CDBG application.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Julie Wayman, the Community Development Block Grant Administrator. So I'm here tonight to present to you the CDBG subcommittee recommendation for the 2019-2020 CDBG year. I first just want to remind everyone that this year, we added three residents to the subcommittee. So Tony Sacco, Chris Potter, and Sarah Lee, who is kindly still in the audience, were part of that decision-making process this year. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. So we met a number of times to both score our grant applications and then to make our funding decisions. So using the grant evaluation criteria, we scored the 23 funding requests that we received. The score range was anywhere from a seven to a 21, and our applications ranged from a 10 to a 19, with the majority of the applications being a 15 and above. After scoring the applications, we made our funding decisions. And as I said, we received 23 requests. These were in the categories of rehab and affordable housing, public services, public facilities and improvements, planning and administration. We received requests in the amount of $1,672,757,000. And we made recommendations in the amount of $1,359,907. Unless anyone has any questions, I would ask that the recommendation be moved to town meeting for final approval.
Ms. Rowe?
I would just like to say I was very glad to see that a certain program was not funded. I think that that is something that I should have voted to do last year, and I think it makes, it's a good wake-up call, and I thank you for doing that.
Mrs. Ma.
Well, does someone, should I move approval, or do I have a conflict?
No, you shouldn't. I mean, it's like.
Move approval?
Second.
And I was gonna ask the chair, I hate to put her on the spot, but this is the first year we had three citizen residents come on, and at the end of the process, I had a sort of mea culpa my way out because I said, you know, when I initially, everyone knows me in meetings, and sometimes I have allergies to extra meetings and long meetings. And I was thinking, I'm gonna have to deal with three more Diane Mahans, who I don't stop talking ever. And I have to say, the process was the exact opposite. I really think, of all the years that I've been on CDBG, which I was on seven-plus years ago, it really is a much better process, but I'd like to get Sarah's take on it. If you, you know, you obviously saw something or things that worked, and I don't know if there's anything else. This is our first year.
Yeah, I thought it was a wonderful process. I really, this was my first opportunity to volunteer for the town, and I really enjoyed it. It was great to work with all of you and the other resident volunteers, and I feel like I learned a lot about the CDBG process. But I have no, have no constructive, critical feedback whatsoever. It was a really great process and a great experience for me.
Little known fact, if you stay to the end of the selectmen's meeting, you have to run for the office next year.
Uh-huh. I'm gonna leave with Julie after that.
We get to do this every two weeks.
Just lastly, I do want to thank Julie.
Yes.
For really putting a lot of work and effort in beforehand. I haven't been away from the process for a while, I didn't have that scoring part of it. And when I heard about it, I went, oh, no. I even called Mr. Chapdeline. And you certainly had everything ready to go, we'd hit the ground running. I think by, by and large, we generally agreed.
Yeah.
And I think that surprised a lot of us a lot because we'd be like, well, I had this, and you'd say, I have this, and, yeah, we all do, so.
We argued ourselves into some numbers.
I know.
Yeah.
I know, but I, but I, you know, that was a lot of work, and we basically put you on the spot and had you be the springboard. And on the, you know, few times where we did talk about and work numbers, you were helping us work along the way to get to that, so.
Well, thank you.
Very professional, and I really did enjoy both the meetings, so.
Thank you, I'm glad.
Not that I don't enjoy every meeting.
Well, we are happy to have you this year.
And I will say ditto, because I enjoyed my time last year, and I agree with what Diane said about you.
Thank you very much.
Joe?
I'll just say this, one of the members who has not had the pleasure of joining the CDBG committee, I still appreciate Julie's contribution, but this, I think this is the second year that the scoring card has been used, and this is incredibly helpful to us, I think.
Oh, good, good, I'm glad.
So thank you for introducing that.
Certainly.
Yeah. And thank you to the volunteers.
Yeah, they were wonderful. It was great to have them. I think their feedback and their critical reading of the applications was great, so I was very happy to have them as part of the process this year, too.
It's a public hearing, is anyone here who wishes to speak to this issue? So as a CDBG vote, this actually is a six-vote thing. So Adam actually has a vote on the allocation, and then we actually, then, but our, technically, our recommendation to town meeting is for their, they don't actually technically have approval, we're asking for their endorsement. But we can probably wrap that all into one vote with six people, and no one's gonna take us to court over it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, six-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bring your daughter again.
Thank you.
Next up, Article 52, revolving funds.
Move approval? Oh, no, sorry, I didn't know if the manager was.
Just one brief comment, as happens from time to time when we look at these, there are two items that I've noticed the board, I'd recommend the board vote to update. Public weigh repair, the prior limit was 5,000, it looks like we spent 10,000 last year, I would move that, or I would suggest that the board increase that to 15,000. And life support services, that's the ambulance revolving fund. The prior cap was $800,000 per year. Last year, we spent 837,000. I'd recommend we move that up to a million dollars.
Move approval? Second, have a tickle.
Further discussion? It's a public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak to this article? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Final votes and comments. I think I'm just gonna move through these one by one and then discuss them, we can do them as a single, and if we have to pick one of them up, we'll do it. Article 27, anybody have anything? Article 30, somebody have?
Yes.
Let's talk about Article 30.
Yep. So I spoke with Tom Hager about to say, in the last meeting, I mean, everyone knows where I stand, the article, the last meeting, we had talked on, about, you're making, revising the article to make it a little less stringent and a little less onerous on certain types of houses. And that wasn't reflected in here. So what I would like to do on this particular article is table it to the next meeting and give me some time to work with Doug, with whatever time he has, to implement some of the suggestions that we had made during the meeting into the actual text of the article that goes to town meeting, so we can, you know, I'm not, in full disclosure, I probably won't come to a yes on it, but if we send it to town meeting, I would like to have it a little more narrowly tailored to lessen the impact that I think it might have, if that makes sense.
I'm just trying to remember, is it, there's something that we voted in the, for in the affirmative that isn't in there, or is it something that you're trying to tailor it?
So in the article.
Where you still won't, because I didn't pick up on anything that was.
So in the article, when we, as it stands, if we vote for it and it goes to town meeting, every, how, every person that sells real estate in Arlington will have to be subject to the inspection and whatnot. We had talked about situations where we could, you know, if it was someone that, a, say, had their pipe replaced in the past five or 10 years, wouldn't have to go through it because they wouldn't have the lead pipes. Someone, there, I think there's ways that we could put into the article that would say, if it's, our house has been sold since we've enacted this, they are exempt from the inspection since they've already gone through the process. And I think that there's a few ways that we can tailor the language to soften the blow if it gets approved by town meeting. And because the way I see the language now, it's just blankly, you know, anybody that sells real estate, so I think I can work with Doug to just implement some of those things. I mean, I think the spirit of the article as put forth by the proponents will still remain the same, will just lessen the impact if it goes forward.
Second.
And just, and just to be clear, there was a 3-2 vote, like the minute said 3-2.
I apologize.
It's fine, but I just wanted to be.
I forgot that was 3-2.
And my plumber is in favor of this warrant article.
Sorry?
My plumber.
We need a plumber on the board.
All right, so we've got, so, I'm sorry, who just made the motion to table? Mrs. Mahan made the motion to table?
No.
Oh, no?
Mr. Hurd.
Oh, Mr. Hurd, and Mrs. Mahan's, thank you. All those in favor, tabling 30.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any comments on 34? Comments on 35?
Yes, I would like to request that we include a clause in this one stating that accessory apartments may not be used as short-term rentals. I asked Mr. Heim about this, how do we do that, whereas they have not been approved, but he said we could put that into our recommended vote, just anticipating that that may be improved.
So was that a table on that one? Bring it back.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, is that enough? Doug, do you?
If you folks want to approve this with the inclusion of that language, I'm pretty confident that I can just put it in, this shall not apply to, accessory apartments will not be eligible, are not eligible for short-term rentals. You're all comfortable with that, I'll move it.
Okay. All right, then we'll, yeah, then we'll just leave it with everything else, then. 41, Arlington Redevelopment Board Memberships and Terms.
So that one, I've come to, and I don't know what the appropriate process would be, but motion to revote, is that?
Because your intent is to?
Because, so, I don't want to belabor it, but I've done, you know, when we talked about it in the last meeting, I had an interesting discussion, I thought, and, you know, I was voting based on the information I had in front of me. The past couple of weeks, I've done a lot of research and talked to a lot of people, and I'm convinced that at this time, the current setup is the best way to get the talent we need on the board to do what they need to do.
I think just say the word, so moved.
So moved.
Second.
So we're just gonna, in my mind, what the intent of this is, is that we would, unless anybody has such correction or change to the language, we'd accept the language, and we'd record it as a 5-0 vote, if we, presuming that's what we're about to do.
Yep.
Okay, everybody? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five-zero vote. I'm gonna say my Minuteman pen is not a winner.
Doesn't work.
That's like the law office of John V. Hurd pens. You really get through a closing.
Let's give it to the select board.
Any discussion on Article 53? Any discussion on Article 78? All right, then, could I have a motion on 27, 34, 35, 53, and 78?
Move approval? I'll second Ms. Rowe.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, 5-0. Correspondents received.
Move receipt?
Second.
Can I suggest that, can we return 18 to the town manager's office for investigation? The Bartlett Avenue, I said, thank you. And should we refer 17 to TAC, or, I don't know?
I think so, and I think TAC has already done work on this, or it may even be actively working on it, so I think referring it to TAC makes very good sense.
Okay. And 16, I don't think we need any referral.
Send it back to me if you don't.
Yeah, exactly. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
New business.
I have nothing other than, as we all know, Chris is, her last night is tonight, we will miss you, Chris, and the staff will miss you. I know you're not gonna be a stranger, so you'll be back, Watts, but we have enjoyed the last three months.
Thank you. As long as the board members stay healthy. That's what I said. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Marie came over and made it clear ahead of time that those weren't for me. Secret admirer.
Well, that's very kind.
Anything else, Marie?
No, that's it. What we all know, we'll all see you April 6th.
What's happening April 6th, Marie?
Nothing much, but if you're around, you might want to vote.
Voting, election day, local elections, contested elections, town meeting, select board, and others, April 6th.
And I hear absentee ballots are finally available.
Yes, they are, as of yesterday. Or maybe, yeah, yesterday was Thursday, yes.
Joe?
Not tonight.
Adam?
I have none of business tonight.
I do, I'm afraid. I went to a wonderful meeting on the Hardy School Playground last week, and it was very well-attended, and the biggest problem was the teachers there and the administrators and the aides, number about 60. They have a parking lot that does not hold all the teachers, and so some of them park on the street, and there are lots of restrictions around the school. Some of them park in the, there's a small lot right south of the Minuteman, and they park there. But in snow emergencies, elections, the teachers have to park on the playground surface. And the parents were really upset because they said, we're the only school in Arlington that doesn't have fields, and that's correct, all the other elementary schools do. And they wanted a real playground with grass, and so what, what happens is about one-half to a third of the space has to be asphalt, really, in order to accommodate the parking. Now, those are two very different disparate uses. Obviously, you shouldn't have the parking there, but it's East Arlington, there's a lot of trouble. I would love to have TAC look at that problem, see if we can expand the parking lot that's south of the Minuteman Trail a little bit, and just see if there's, I mean, we need to accommodate those teachers. And the principal was absolutely wonderful, and she, you know, when the parents said, well, we don't want the teachers to park there, she said, they have to park there at times. And she was, you know, very realistic, but I think if we could get TAC to really look at that situation, that would be wonderful, if that was okay with all of you.
Oh, that's reasonable.
Yeah, I wrote Howard Muse and Cory about it, and Cory wrote me back and said, when the formal request comes out, of course. He's terrific. He's terrific.
I'm all set.
Thank you, that's it.
I just want to thank the Arlington Public Art Committee for, participated in the banner contest, we just awarded the winners a couple on Thursday, I think it was, and the banners are going to go up on Mass Ave in the next couple of weeks. So, there was about 95 contestants, the quality of the work was unbelievable. The, the one that I actually picked was a middle-schooler, and it was a photograph, but the theme was trees, and it was really cool the way they did it, so, I'm looking forward to driving down Mass Ave and seeing the artwork. And after, I was able to mosey down to the Arlington High School Art Exhibit, which I think Joe was probably going to talk about, because I saw Joe there, another great, really, was blown away by the talent of the art that's produced by our students.
No, I was just going to mention for folks that Ms. Rowe and Ms. Mahan and I did try to defend our honor at the AEF Trivia B, and we did make it to the finals, and we were helped in no small part by the fact that Ms. Rowe was the answer to one of the questions.
It was terribly embarrassing.
It was in the finals.
Imagine, at your age, my young age of 70, being the answer to a trivia question, it made me feel somewhat old.
Did anyone get it wrong?
And I love, everyone got it right, but some of the answers, the team in front of us, Ms. Rowe, the lady sitting behind us, you know, something like that.
Is it arrow?
To the right of us.
That's hysterical. And that is all my business.
Thank you.
I wrote something down, but...
Oh, no, it's not all my business. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for a wonderful year.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My advice to the next chair is to not take a new job the same day that you get elected chair. That was just a tactically bad move. All right, our next meeting is April 8th.
Who to adjourn?
Second.
We, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.